Awesome.
You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Sir, all right, we will be calling for order. The Thursday, March twenty first, twenty twenty four, Citrus Dublin Board of Appeals meeting here in the Citrus, uh, in, uh, the room, um, uh, and live via Zoom, uh, in select board hearing. Uh, the Citrus Dublin Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during the meetings. We have all members to interact with the panel, keeping in there the agreement. We value the participation of our community. We want all participants, including marginalized minority communities to feel welcome and protected. We ask our community, commit, commute, committee members, excuse me, and all the participants to commit to these measures to support and support our community. The meeting is being reported, uh, and streamed live via Facebook. Um, the, the links to the Zoom meeting are available on the town website. Um, and I also think it will be available on Citrus TV, if I'm not mistaken, at some point. With that, uh, and again, we are live. Elizabeth? Is our recording set? Got it?
Yes.
Got it?
Yeah.
I've just seen it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ah, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Um, uh, and with that, uh, we will call the first application, which I believe has been continued, which is the application of John Jay and, uh, and Marie Herry, uh, pair of Thompson McCarthy, uh, for, uh, the property of sixteen Lydett House Road in Citrus. Um, unless there's somebody here on that case, I assume that's being continued. Okay, so on that, continuing back to the, who said April meeting or May meeting? Okay. All right, so with that, as we zoom off, uh, we will call our second application of Joseph, uh, Fazoli, fifty Rockway Avenue Wayman, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, and Citrus zoning bylaws, and/or any other relief from Board of Appeals to grant to allow the raisin reconstruction of the dwelling at ninety one Oceanside Drive in Citrus. Do we have someone here?
Yes.
Please, uh, please come up and your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Fazoli can just call, that I know is that.
Fazoli, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Uh, can you run us through the proposed project?
Uh, we're raising it above the eighteen feet, get out flood zone and make an addition. We have six children. We're trying to make a forever home and
That's situation, so we want to stay there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. We have six kids and my mother's older and she's gonna
Uh, if you want to talk, um, you know, if you can actually, we might have some questions. Some people create eight bedroom houses in there and have their whole. Uh, I am sure that is, you guys will want to feel it there. Uh, okay, um, I think the plan, the short of self-explanatory, we're, we're Bob. Commentary on this.
No, not really. Uh, you know, setbacks, I heard a little bit of off-the-record discussion earlier. Uh, do make sense mathematically. Um, so the primary setbacks would be average of these properties within two hundred feet of this property in either direction, Seventh Avenue and Oceanside. Uh, the only thing I would say, and it doesn't affect the outcome, is that you can't add Oceanside, have Seventh Avenue together through your math. You're gonna take them one at a time, but even given that, the math works out fine. Um, the only other thing is, of course, it's gonna have to meet FEMA regulations. That will be the crawl space under the house will have to be filled to a level of the surrounding rate or above flood vents, which I noticed were already mentioned on this plan. Maximum height forty two per inch. Needs to be improved. Pretty straightforward.
Uh, yeah, just, because we want to make sure we're teaming this up correctly, uh, if I do, we recommend that I think you're right. Um, the proposal is sixteen point three from the front yard setback, and the average is sixteen and a quarter. If that's, you know, or some number that is, here's the argument, some number that is slightly greater than that. You're not including Oceanside Drive, right?
Yeah, if you actually do the Seventh Avenue, all we can do is add fifteen point three three.
Right? So, um, so we're a little bit safer, if you will, in that standpoint. Um, right, the rest of the things are either in pain, uh, or within, uh, the requirements, right? One foot, yep, one feet, that's all. Correct. Okay, uh, board questions, and then, and then people in the room, and then people online in that order. Thank you for putting that up. Order.
Uh, clarification, your application says demo the existing home. Are you demoing it or just?
Demoing.
You are?
Yes. Yep.
Uh, okay, uh, any questions or comments by the community in the room?
We have a letter from our neighbor.
That? Any?
I didn't read it, see it, right?
Yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, that'd be great. You want to put it in the file? Great. So, uh, with non-cearing being held, Leo Martin, and ninety four, Oceanside Drive across the street, uh, is in support. Uh, so, thank you, uh, thank you Mr. Martin. Um, so we'll give that to Elizabeth, she needs to then file. We always like to see community support for the process. Uh, anybody in the room wants to speak on this? Great. Anybody online?
Down.
Okay. Uh, with motion?
Bill?
Okay.
For the application of Joseph Fazoli, fifty Rockway Avenue, Matt, requests a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section, section six, and section eight, ten, and Citrus bylaws, and any other relief from Board of Appeals to grant to allow the raisin reconstruction of the dwelling at ninety one Oceanside Drive. The board find that such raisin rebuild did not create any new non-conformities to the extent that intensified and exists in non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and at such a plan, be approved of the Morse Engineering, uh, dated, uh, first February first, twenty twenty four.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, this is, uh, uh, Zach Kerland. I'm one of Mark and Jess's neighbors. I had a question and wasn't able to unmute myself during the question period.
I am sorry about that, Mr. Kerland. Uh, we, we, we apologize for the technical error. Please. Go, go, go ahead.
I guess I have a couple of questions. The, the plans that have been submitted don't have a lot of details on the renovations. So, one question is, is the house going to be lifted at all? And if so, is it going to be lifted on the existing foundation with just higher foundation? Or is it going, are pylons going to be put in and, and the house going to be lifted that way is one question?
Um, folks, do you, do you want?
It's a new foundation.
So, sounds like it's a new foundation and it will have to meet FEMA, FEMA requirements.
It is being lifted to fourteen feet.
There you go. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Kerland?
That answers that question. Uh, the next question is, do you know what kind of roof is going to be going on the new addition that's being built twenty feet closer to our house?
So, a-again, it is a raisin reconstruction, so it's getting, right, if I'm not mistaken, it's being bulldozed. So, it's, it's, I assume it will be the same roof for the entire house, but that being said, folks, what type of roof are you putting on?
We, actually, because we took into consideration the original plan was a full two and a half feet, two and a half floors, fifty feet. But to accommodate our neighbors, we kept the the, we lowered the second half of the addition so that we wouldn't disturb the neighbors as much as possible.
But it would, it's the same roof.
It's the same roof. It's just, if you look at the construction. It's two and a half feet for the original, you know, the, two and a half floors, the ori- the original, and then two, two floors for the addition.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, sir, does that answer your, was that really your question? Was that the, or were you interested in whether this is an asphalt roof? Or a metal?
It was, it was more of whether it would be, I guess, a flat roof or a gabled roof, although it's certainly helpful and reassuring to hear that Mark and Jess, that you guys are, uh, not building as high on the new addition. Um, but it was more a question of trying to figure out how high that new addition and, and what the changes would be from our perspective, uh, when, when that was completed. But it sounds like it will be a little bit lower than your existing house. Or a little lower than the, than the new part of the house on this house.
The, the existing be all the way to the fifty feet, but the new addition will be a half floor low and that will be a flat roof.
Okay, so that, there you go. That's, that's your, that's your answer.
And then, I guess, the last question I have is, uh, recognizing that you guys are putting a garage underneath the uh, new addition as well, um, are you planning on leaving the gravel in front of it? Or are you going to be putting in pavers or, uh, pavement or something, just more, more so trying to think through how water passes around the house during a flood or a storm?
We plan on keeping that same wall, that, there's like a knee wall that goes around the, we plan on keeping that. And it's more as, more or less, the driveway's not gonna change. Going up to the house.
We're assuming it's gonna be gravel.
Right.
Gravel shells. Right, uh, and I encourage you to continue these open dialogues with your neighbors on these issues. Mr. Kerlin, are you good for now?
I, I think those have answered all the questions I have at the moment.
Thank, thank you for your, thank you for asking. Um, we'll do it one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, so, thank you very much. Good luck with the project. All right. We'll go. Okay, uh, we have the third application. Uh, Jeremy Henry, twenty one Normal Avenue, with such a new permit finding in accordance with the section six, section eight, ten, point two, of the Citrus bylaws, and any other relief the Board of Appeals to grant to allow the raisin reconstruction of a single-family home at the earlier road. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jeremy Henry, twenty one Normal Avenue.
Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering.
Gentlemen, walk us through the project.
Thank you. Um, since we originally applied for this project a month ago, Mr. Henry has taken ownership of the property. I turned it in to your department today, updated, he, reflecting that Mr. Henry is the current owner now. Uh, we're here for a special permit in accordance with section eight, ten, point two of the bylaw for raisin rebuild of a single-family home. The existing site is located in the R three zoning district. It was developed with a single-family home, which was built around nineteen hundred. It's approximately fourteen hundred and forty-five square feet in size. The lot itself is non-conforming, uh, and the structure is non-conforming. The lot area is five thousand two hundred and forty square feet, or ten thousand square feet is required. The front yard setback is eight and a half feet on Driftway, where thirteen point one is required. It's sixteen and a half feet on Collier, where twenty one point four is required. The side yard setback on the right side is one point eight feet, where eight feet is required, and on the left side is seven point eight versus eight foot being required. The proposal here is to take down the home, construct a new one, uh, in its location. It's a two and a half story height on the building. It has an attached two-car garage. It's approximately three thousand four hundred and thirty-three square feet of floor area, which represents a hundred and thirty-seven point five percent increase. It corrects the rear yard non-conformity. It complies with the front yard setback to Collier. The right side yard comes into conformance, the left side yard comes into conformance. The only remaining non-conformities, there are two of them, one of them being the lot area, are obviously not changing. The other one is the front yard with respect to Driftway. The existing building is eight and a half. Our proposed building is at twelve point two to the building and ten point four to a, uh, an overhang over the front door. This is a new home, which would be constructed in accordance with all new building, uh, codes. It's a significant improvement to the neighborhood. There are homes of significant size, uh, abutting this property, certainly within the neighborhood. Our proposal coming in at three thousand four hundred and thirty-three square feet, we felt was keeping tune and character of the surrounding community in the zoning district. I turn it over to you. Questions or comments?
Three, four, three, okay. Uh, yeah, we're just making sure the numbers match up. I don't have any initial questions. Uh, I would ask Bob. Any comments before I ask or?
No, I, I, it's funny, I didn't say it kind of much, move it. So, the numbers that are on the eight, the, uh, side yard setbacks are eight point nine and ninety, is that what it said? Is that right?
The, um,
The left.
The proposed is eight point nine proposed, and then on the right-hand side would be to the side of the garage, which is nine point zero, correct?
I know, the only other comment I have was, would be this uh, house was built, would be the assessor's card, in nineteen hundred, so it'll have to be, uh, run through the historical commission before it can be done.
All right, uh, initial question from the board.
There you go.
Uh, community members that would like to speak? Yeah, just for the sake. Uh, name, name and address for the record.
Yep, Greg Legan, uh, for Collier Road, so abutting property. Uh, we, we remember the homeowner expressed, wanted to talk about here, uh, that, the, the only, the primary concern we have is just drainage, uh, in that area is, is really tough, so we, we talked about that with him, but uh, we wanted to make sure that our some pump, you know, canages, some pumps, uh, go on a lot, even in minor, right? Uh, and we were told when we moved into our home, which is existing, and that was built, impacted, uh, the next door neighbors next to us. So, we, we just wanted to make sure there was a focus on moving that water, uh, making sure that we're managing that drainage, uh, in an effective way. We know it, it gets wet certainly this time of year, I'm sure.
Um, any comments, folks, that, I mean? You guys have been in discussions about that, however, right? If you have an open dialogue.
Yes.
Correct. Uh, any other, any other comments from the people in the room? Any comments by anybody online?
Yeah.
Uh, any more comments from the board? Questions? Bob, anything else we?
No, just to speak briefly with the drainage and stormwater situation, this, depending on numbers, they have to go before the planning board for a stormwater review. Uh, if they end up needing, uh, subsurface infiltrators to take out, take the loose rock, for example, that sort of case. So, um, that subject will be covered separately.
Right. Um, so, folks, I mean, uh, I think that hopefully we'll address the concerns, at least it will be, the issue will be addressed.
Yes, we've, we've heard the concern will address. And just on the, the, on the historical piece, we did apply to the historical commission, we're on the board, um, uh,
Yeah, I mean, that will, yeah, any, any decision we make would be, you know, of course, if it's a positive decision, it's inclusion upon, right? Stormwater redo and garden integration, it can supply, and the, the historical commission saying that you can do that all that, right? Anybody not making motion?
The, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, please, sorry.
The, the existing detached garage will be raised along with the house, and the new garage will be attached to the back of the house. Is that where?
That's, that's correct. The existing detached garage comes down at all. The new house, the garage is attached.
Yep. All right, I'll make a motion on the third application. I'm Jeremy Henry, twenty one, uh, Citrus. Request a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two, of Citrus bylaw. Any other relief that the Board of Appeals to grant to allow the raisin reconstruction of a previously non-conforming single-family home in accordance with the Playa of Morse Engineering dated February eighth, twenty twenty four. Does the board find that such raisin rebuild does not create any new non-conformities to the extent that intensified and existing non-conformities? Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I might add, the applicant's attorney, Walter Sullivan, couldn't be with us tonight, but he's offered to write the decision. Forward a draft to the board.
That would be wonderful. So, we will hold off on writing that, because we will wait for, uh, Sullivan to, uh, give us a draft.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time, Stephen.
Thank you. All right, we will be calling the technically fourth application of the Citrus Harbor Yacht Club, eighty-four Jericho Road, Citrus, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six, and sections four seventy point six F and eight ten point B of the Citrus zoning bylaw, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals to grant to allow, in addition, to be constructed on a non-conforming structure, which appears to be pool house. Name and address for the record.
Alan Paulard, thirty one, Budgerlain.
Gregory Morse, registered, and she has more engineering.
Gentlemen, walk us through.
We're here, uh, in accordance with section eight, ten, point two B of the bylaw, as well as section four seventy point six F, which is the floodplain and water shed protection overlay district, um, to allow a proposed addition on the existing pool building at the Citrus Harbor Yacht Club. The existing site is rather large, the yacht club campus, it's over two and a half acres in size, more or less. It's in the R three zoning district. Uh, it's existed there since nineteen forty. There were several buildings. There's a clubhouse, there's a dockside activities building, there's an office. This is the pool building. Um, the pool building is right up along Jericho Road, behind the white fence, uh, that runs along Jericho Road. The pool building itself was, uh, built in nineteen eighty. It went through some substantial renovations, uh, you know, twenty ten, twenty twelve. Uh, but it's approximately nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet in size. The building, um, is non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback. As shown on the plan, the pool house building is two point seven feet from the front block line at Jericho, right?
Right.
The proposal here is to construct an addition off of it, uh, that's highlighted and bold on the plan. That addition, uh, connects with, uh, roof area. The addition itself has a enclosed room of sixteen by sixteen, uh, feet. So, the proposal with that addition, uh, the addition itself is nine feet from Jericho Road, so it's no closer than what exists today. It represents a total building size that would be twelve hundred and forty-four square feet, which is a twenty-five point nine percent increase. Uh, we felt that a special permit and relief could be granted in this case because it's no closer than existing site features. Um, there's fencing and landscaping along Jericho Road. Uh, we've submitted pictures at the top right of the plan that depict where the addition's going. It essentially won't be visible, uh, from Jericho Road at that location due to the fence and some tree that are in locations. Then with respect to the water resource, uh, protection floodplain district, uh, general note on, general note twelve on our plan requires that all construction comply with FEMA, which in a case like this, which is a non-residential building, uh, it requires flood vents, it requires flood-resistant construction. It doesn't necessarily require that the first floor be elevated above the floodplain. Um, so we would comply with all FEMA requirements. We made application, uh, to the conservation commission for the review of that aspect. But, so that's, this is probably what we would. It's been submitted to the conservation. It's from the beginning.
Okay.
On their dot, yes. So, I have no idea.
Where's the? Um. Or it's comments? No, really. I'm just trying to and I, I'm just, again, I'm, uh, trying to keep up with the numbers, sorry. These three does not fit in the notes. Uh, and you, no, no, and I understand what you're saying, which is historic lock open nine feet. The corner of the addition will be eleven feet from Jericho Road.
The, the zoning charts and packet as opposed to
Uh, board.
Uh, Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Where do you get your definition of addition?
Addition. Well, as opposed to being a separate structure, this is connected. It's connected by the roof lines. So, it is one structure from these entire, it's not a separate structure.
Uh, because I have a real problem with that. So, I did look it up. So, on Y insider dictionary. An addition to an existing building means any wall and roof expansion to the perimeter of a building in which the addition is connected by a common load-bearing wall, other than a firewall. An involved and roofed addition, which is connected by a firewall, or is separated by an independent perimeter load-bearing wall, is new construction. There are no shared walls. This is a new construct. This is a new building. It's a separate building that happens to be connected by roofs. Roofs covering walkways. Uh, not even common areas to the two buildings. Uh, with a new construction, you're creating a new non-conforming, which requires variance. I don't see that any other way. I see this as a, as a new separate building.
I'll look at it.
Let me make a motion.
Uh, well, let's listen. Well, let's, yeah, uh, you can, whatever motion you want. I want to turn it over to the community and online for their commentary. And then, in light of your statement and your, your belief that this is new construction, which you can. Very fair. Um, we can, they can make some decisions, but, um, Bob, any other comment?
No, we're
It's an interesting point.
Yeah. You know, I am and obviously considered that.
All right, because although it's a roof line, to your point, right, it is not, there is no load-bearing wall. It is, there's, there's a, there's, there's no common wall. There's no, there's no wall. Uh, there's a walkway and it's a common. Uh, community, anybody here that wants to, to speak on this? Anybody online?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask a question? If you were to enclose that portion of the walkway, so say walking from the tennis pro shop to the building, would that alleviate a separate dwelling if this became interior space? Maybe with storefront or something on either side?
The with the lack of the definition, I believe that it should be defined. The definition of a shared common load-bearing wall. We define that to put a fence, gate, a wall that touches the two buildings.
Oh, interior tempered space, I would call.
What, what Justin is saying is that's converted to an interior space. It's still, it's still a, a hallway.
You got converting to an interior space.
Just this portion, so between the buildings, I'm just trying to convince you guys why it might make sense. Um, would that alleviate concerns?
He's asking different questions. He's asking different questions. Say, if this design has changed. And that current overhang is no longer an overhang, but it becomes enclosed. Right, it's still enclosed space. They're on one side, maybe they're on the other side. Right? If one walked around.
This, you know, perhaps that exterior wall still picks up the load, but this becomes interior space when they've got the luxury of not having to.
Uh, alteration reconstruction. So this is in the. The proposed repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change shall meet all dimensional requirements for the front side rear yard setbacks. That's what's tend to be.
No, I understand. I understand. But if that's because, because again, from an architectural standpoint, right, there are plenty of spaces that have.
Because this is a side from, he is creating a new non-conformity.
I'm not, I'm not advocating, I'm.
Going for a bylaw. Can't do it.
But if that becomes, if this came today, it's drawn there, does that?
So then it becomes an addition with alteration, make that too big. Case of dimensionally non-conforming structure, that's. As well as his lot size, lot area, uh. Or some metaphorically non-conforming dimensional requirements. The maximum height. You have the proposed repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension to condition.
Right, so this.
Or structural change shall meet all dimensional requirements for setbacks. So whether he connects it or not. It still has to meet all dimensional requirements for setbacks. It doesn't. Yes.
I think if you look back. At recent and not so recent situations where that particular argument has been addressed. Needing to be done dimensional setbacks. You're going to find the board, this board and others have routinely allowed. Um, that regulation to be. I won't say overlooked, but to consider in a, in a different, in a different light. So that many times the setback is. An existing non-conformity, which this building certainly has. And that existing non-conformity is not made exacerbate. Made more non-conforming. The board has allowed. The addition. To, uh. To be non-conforming in terms of the zoning setbacks to the area. I think that we find that happens all the time. I also think at some point, I remember reading, and I think the board discussed some case law. That that's that theory of. Basically, I think, I think we've settled that issue.
So I think, I think your argument that this is a separate structure is incredibly developed. That it's absolutely bad. As this is drawn, this is a separate structure. Right? And, and then the rule's very separate structure with, with a lot of time. Other board members have made different. Absent a different plan to the contrary. Right? Where this is an extension like it would be an extension anywhere else, right? Where the extension is such that it is. There is no sort of new non-conformity. In other words, there's a non-conformity off Jericho Road. It is X. Right? Whatever's being done, it gives not any new non-conformity. It is still the same non-conformity. It's off Jericho Road. It happens to be less than X, right? So you're not exacerbating any of this. In that situation, again, absent, we're not going to rule out something where there's absent plan. Right? Fair. But, you know, absent, uh, absent a plan that. Addresses. Real concern, okay, I guess super valid. Um, yeah, we'd have to take this out, right? And have that, have that. Yes, sir. Fox.
Yeah, I, I hadn't heard that view on this before. So, you know, I'm. Thinking about this as I go here. If I, if I look at this, I think the board typically routinely approves porches. For example, being added to a house. For example, if this didn't have a foundation under it, but was a floor, a deck that we were putting down with a roof overhang on it. Would that be a new structure or is that an addition to an existing building? I think it's an addition to an existing building. It's connected the entire, if I took the roof off of this existing building and extended it up over this entire area that we're proposing to construct. So that we have a roof over our head then. Okay? That's a porch.
What's the roof connected to?
The existing pool house building.
What's that?
The existing pool house building.
Existing common structural wall.
Okay? Okay. So, yeah, so. If I build that porch around this entire perimeter of what I'm proposing. That's presumably okay with a special permit because I'm not closer, presumably. But, and I'm sharing that common wall. I don't think there's anything in the bylaw that prohibits at that point. Because now you've made it a porch space, putting up a wall and making it an enclosed porch space. You still are attaching, whether you're attaching this building, you're attaching the roof to this building. It's all sharing that common wall with the pool house. As it sits today.
No, you in this drawer, you've created a separate building. In this drawer that you've presented to us. It's a separate building.
I think this, I, I think Bob alluded to there's examples, and I think one of them, there's a duplex building that I can clearly think about on Lawson Terrace. That there are two essentially separate houses where the corner boards of the roof. Touch each other. The two houses go off forty-five degrees. That's considered one structure. Which is the same exact scenario.
This floor is not bound by the decisions of previous boards.
Understood.
I believe that there needs to be established a definition of an addition, a consistent definition. So we're not touching corner boards, not, you know, I would, and that would be my motion. Is that the board finds. That the proposal as drawn is an addition as defined by this, or how you would word that legally is.
Is new construction.
Is, is new construction.
Is that a flat?
Or do we address that procedurally later? At last we got.
Yeah, yeah, I think we address that sort of procedurally later. I think where we are here is, I think there's a compelling argument. That this is fundamentally a separate structure. Uh, and the only thing connecting it is fundamentally artificial, sort of new one. Uh, I think it is a much more compelling, I think that this is in fact. Uh, an addition, an extension of the existing structure. If, um, if the spaces are enclosed, there are, I believe, if there's a common wall, right? I mean, if this was a fighting up against the pool building, it was a common wall. I think it would be a different discussion. Um, I think there is, and this is only on me personally. Um, I think if this is a structure where this is an enclosed, this is enclosed, right? And you want to have doors that go through for whatever reasons and arguably even open up part of the new structure to those doors. Right? So that is in fact open somewhat because there's egress. I think that that becomes compelling, is more compelling for me as well. So my recommendation in light of. What we've heard from my colleagues here who have a very firm view of what this possible should be described. Uh, and the other two boarding chapters. You may want to rethink the. Does that make sense? Does, so, um, I'm assuming you're going to ask for a continuance. I'd like to request a continuance. Continuance is granted. We can.
I'll make a motion. Well, I assume the continuance is granted. That, that was presumptions made. Motion to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. It, it is. Yeah, it's something we haven't really looked at specifically before in that way. I think it's something in lens. We heard from Bob that, yeah, we're looking at it that way. Uh, necessarily, but it's a different.
Elizabeth, what's the date?
What are we, what are we going to speak to main meeting?
Main.
Thank you. Oh.
Want to speak?
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Time to get to the.
And you got to.
But we could, we, I just have to, we allow if we have Monday, we could speak it, but I don't have a, we have design.
Well, they have some discussions, right? They have to think about it in light of the compensation. It'd be very, to be a second pick. So I wouldn't be a little bit centred. All right. On the fifth. We will call the fifth application of John A. Perez. Uh, two Jackson Road, Citro mask, a question of special permit finding in accordance with NPL chapter forty-eight, section six. In section eight ten point two, to two building bylaws and or any. What's written in capital to allow to both condition the three existing non-conforming single family home. One more time.
For the record, Gregory Morse, registered as Chief Morse Engineering, representing the property owner John Perez. Uh, we're here seeking a special permit in accordance with section eight ten point two. For what I hope was considered an addition that number two.
It is, well done.
Okay. Good. So this one, I think, is fairly straightforward. This is in the R two zoning district. The existing home was built in nineteen fifty. It's eight hundred and eighty-four square feet in size. The only non-conformity here is the lot area. The lot is thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-nine square feet. Where twenty thousand square feet is the requirement. The existing home complies with all setbacks to all property lines. The proposal on the plan here is the bold. Uh, outline that you see is a single story addition. It's seven hundred and eight square feet in size. Which brings the total home size up to fifteen hundred and ninety-two. It represents an eighty percent size increase. Uh, the addition complies with all setbacks, front, rear and side. Um, there's no change obviously to the lot area. There are homes of similar size in the neighborhood. We're not creating any new non-conformities. Uh, we're not altering existing non-conformities. And it's an addition.
Addition, addition, it's an addition. Bob, any comments?
I know, I think Greg's absolutely right. It's about as straightforward as you guess it gets.
Anything from the neighbors? In the room? Anything from anybody online?
No.
Board is?
I have nothing to add.
And?
Nothing new?
Yeah.
You're up.
Um, this application would make a motion for John A. Perez, two Jackson Road situation. Request a special permit finding reported with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six and section eight ten point two of the bylaw. Any other relief or appeals to grant to allow a proposed addition. On a pre-existing non-conforming single family home for plan of Morse Engineering dated February ninth, twenty twenty-four. Does the board find that such addition does not create any new non-conformities to the setback and that this time it needs to be non-conformities? Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second, all in favor?
Uh.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Greg. Once in a while, you get a call.
Once in a while.
Okay, once in a while. Just said any words. All right. On our. Final application of the evening, which is why it looks like everyone is here today. Um, the application of the Frank Arceau as trustee of one sixty-four turner road realty trust. Uh, one ninety-nine platform of Citro Mass, seeking following relief. To allow the raising and restructuring of the building, dwelling or structure. At one fifty-four turner road, uh, requesting a waiver pursuant to the zoning. The zoning bylaws, section eight ten point one, to allow for the continuation of the structure in our use. A special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, section four seven point six F. To allow for substantial improvement to an existing structure. In the floodplain and worship section district, finding pursuant to zoning bylaws, section eight ten point two C, that the raising of the structure of the grid is not conformable. The grid is not conformable is not in the more different neighborhood and for any other relief to the board. Name and add.
Jeff, or I ask.
Sorry about that.
Hey, listen. We're home.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Felice. I represent Frank Snow, who's the applicant. Frank, are you in the room? I was just talking to him. He'll be here in a minute. Um, Frank is the owner of the property. So, uh. It's my opinion that this is a pretty straightforward zoning application. And, um. I will explain why I believe that in a minute. But I just kind of want to start, um. The. Notice that you just read was, was fairly lengthy. We're seeking three. Particular, uh, indistinct requests. One, uh, is a finding under section eight seventy, I'm sorry, eight twenty point two C zoning bylaw. The other is, uh, a special permit, which is, uh, which is pursuant to section four seventy point six F. And I'll go through all of this. And, and the third, uh, uh. Though we don't think that we need it as belt and suspenders. Uh, we've requested a waiver of, uh, pursuant to section eight ten point one. So with respect to the finding, the section eight ten point two C that we've requested. The structure. Which was originally a dwelling constructed in nineteen hundred. Uh, is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, kind of pre-existing non-conforming lot. Um. Which is non-conforming, the lot is non-conforming because it was laid out on a plan prior to zoning. Without the required lot area, lot frontage and lot width. The structure on the property is non-conforming. Um, with respect to the front yard setback, which is two feet in the thirty-foot zone. And the northerly side yard, which is seven point four feet in an eight-foot zone. Uh, we are not proposing by this application to create any new non-conformities. Uh, the front yard setback will become more non-conforming. And will be greatly improved over what it is now.
Less non-conforming.
Uh, thank you. Will be less non-conforming, more conforming. Uh, and greatly improved because it's going from two feet to ten feet. So I'm moving it eight feet further.
Back.
Uh, back. The side yard setback non-conformity on the north side yard. Um, is proposed to be entirely eliminated. So we're going to totally eliminate a non-conformity that currently exists with respect to the structure. So we're requesting a finding, and I know you guys are familiar with this, but since we have a full room. Pursuant to section eight ten point two C. Uh, that the raising and reconstructing of the structure. Will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there now. And that's what the standard is for the finding. Not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now. So in this neighborhood, um. I know everybody in this room is familiar with this neighborhood. But, um. It, uh, it's challenging, uh, almost impossible not to find. Uh, a property that is, uh, non, uh. That actually conforms with zoning. And it's challenging, if not impossible, to find a property that, um. Is conforming with respect to the setbacks of the structure on the lot. So it is much more conforming in San, uh, Common in Sand Hills. Uh, to have extremely small lots with homes comprised of footprints that take up almost the entire property. On a lot and, uh, which are at or close to the property line. Many cases are actually over the property line. So just for purposes of this hearing and just to, uh, complete the record. By way of example, I've done a little analysis and I just wanted you to have it through your file. All right? So, um. This here is an analysis of. All of the properties that, uh, not substantially all the properties between. Situate F.
Yeah. That would be great to shoot and put it in the file.
Between Situate F and Jericho Road.
Yep.
Along Turner. And you can see, um, that many, if not. That, that many of these properties are actually smaller. Than the property, which is the subject of this application with larger homes on. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. Um, and I also wanted to point out that one fifty four Turner Road. Um, uh, is owned by Joanne Wykoff. Who is, I believe, in the room today with the lawyer, who's, uh, in opposition or will.
Yes, there's, there's some opposition to this application. We'll hear from the opposition hopefully in a targeted, coherent. And, uh, efficient manner.
Okay.
Uh, separately, but please, I want you to go through this.
So. Yeah, so this, so this proposal is completely and entirely consistent with what exists now in, uh, in, in, in the neighborhood. So that's the, the, what I have to say about the finding part of it and the not substantially more detrimental part of it.
Okay.
With respect to the special permit, okay? Uh, not only is the proposal not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And, uh, and, and not only is it less nonconforming. But it is, but the proposal is actually beneficial to the neighborhood. Insofar as we're talking about what is occurring in the floodplain. Okay? Um, the special permit is required in the floodplain under the zoning by law. Um, uh, under section four seventy point six F. Um, because when you're doing construction. In the floodplain, if you have a pre, a, a structure which preexists, uh, March second nineteen ninety two. And you're doing a substantial improvement. The board is authorized to grant a special permit. Um, which basically requires that the property be brought into compliance with the flood. Insurance standards or the FEMA regulations and building code with respect to flood compliant structures. And that's why so many of the structures or dwellings in. Situate are raised up on piles because anytime anybody, uh, does any work. In a flood zone that is, that exceeds more than fifty percent of the value of the building. The entire structure is required to be brought into compliance, which means the first floor needs to be above the base flood elevation. So. Um, in any event, the three standards under sections, uh, four seventy six F with respect to the special permit. Are, uh, that the improvement has to be consistent with flood insurance program, that's one. That has to be consistent with the building code flood provisions is two. And that, um, the improvements can't affect the natural drainage patterns of the water force. So, um, this is clearly a structure. I think Bob, you'd probably agree that even though structure is not defined in zoning by law. In the building code, it's defined as anything constructed or built, right? Go ahead. So, um.
And I, and I agree with you. It's not as zoning by law.
Yeah, there's a, there's a definition of existing structure is, but then it uses the word structure.
Right, so there is, there is no definition of what structure is in bylaws. I agree with your interpretation of what it says.
Right, and I just wanted to point out to the board that in the definition section of the zoning by law, in the very front of it, it says, if there's a term. Or word not defined in the zoning by law, you look to the building code for instruction. So. Uh, that said, uh, essentially. Um, raising this building onto piles or piers, which is what is proposed here. Um, which is required by the zoning by law and in the building code, um, will allow, will allow, uh, flood and surface waters. To flow underneath the structure, uh, and through the property. As opposed to the current scenario where there's a cinder block foundation, meaning a wall. Acraid that displaces floodwaters and does not allow the water to flow directly through. The property from the ocean. To the, to the wetland on the opposite side. So, um, in summary, the proposal be entirely, will entirely eliminate a hazard in the, in the flood zone because the structure right now is a hazard. Uh, and it will be required to bring, uh, to be building code compliant. There will be no impact to the natural drainage and so forth. So that brings me to the third item and the third request, which would be the waiver, okay? So. In order to address the waiver, I, I, I need to, I need to give you a little history of what has occurred with the property. Okay? So as I indicated, the existing house was constructed in nineteen hundred. Going all the way to twenty seventeen, the then owner, Mr. Valdez. He listed the property for sale in the spring of two thousand seventeen. I have documentation to back all this up, which I can provide to the board. Um, and at the time, shortly after that, few months after that, he began. To dismantle the property without the proper permits. I think Bob could attest to this. So what? What occurred in that circumstance was Bob, um, sent him a letter and said cease and desist. Uh, dismantle. Uh, I understand that your, uh, intention to instruct a dwelling. Um, but you need to go to the zoning board to do that. So, um.
Again, historical standpoint, this is for all of our backwards on this stuff written. Sort of thing. We got somebody who listed it for sale. I, again, I completely, I believe you, you're not mean.
No, no, I'm just.
But, but he listed it for sale and then decided. Theoretically in his mind that he's not going to sell that house. He's going to build a house on it. So he started a demolition plot to. To build a new house on that property. This gentleman.
Yes, so, so, uh, and that actually is stated in the letter that Bob wrote.
Yep.
Okay. After Bob wrote him the letter. And after he stopped dismantling midstream. He applied for zoning relief. And he got it. And the zoning relief. Was to raise and reconstruct the structure. And the board, despite the fact that the building. Was partially dismantled.
Right.
Determined that it was a preexisting nonconforming structure. And could be rebuilt, meaning that it wasn't abandoned.
So, but. I'm just trying to get the timing. I apologize for that. So he bought it.
So I don't know when he bought it.
Well, that except the opinion. Just reading the.
Okay, yeah.
He bought it sometime in twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then he. According to you, and, and I, I, again, I'm not saying. According to his opinion, he bought it in twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
In July of twenty seventeen, with a cease and desist from Bob saying, what are you doing? It was fine. Um. Go to the zoning, if you, what you want to do is very, you construct this property, throw the board. The board heard the application. Uh, and gave him. Do we have the site plan, the original?
That I did not see. I didn't even know of the board's. Uh, special permit. Until after I filed this application. Uh, these are just documents that are all referenced in my presentation. You might have given me right now. These are the two existing agreements. So what I just handed you. Were the, uh. Two listing agreements, one from two thousand seventeen before the dismantling. Uh, I don't know. One in two thousand and eighteen. Hey, I just got your letter tonight, so I didn't even know you were going to be here. So I don't want to. You know, the people are.
Yeah, and so, so we're a little surprised.
Yeah. So, um.
So this is the original listing from. Twenty seventeen. Prior to dismantling.
Right. Then there was the dismantling, then there was the special permit or the finding and the.
Right, what we're missing, what we're missing here for the completeness of the story is what was that original plan? To raise and reconstruct the house, which is sort of lost in history.
Right, but it's referenced in the decision, which is the final action that was going to get. And, and.
Well, I understand. What I'm saying is we don't know. What that house, am I missing something? I don't know what that house would look like. I don't know if it's square footage. It's, right? All I know is it equates the gross, gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Right?
And then, and then, and then the, uh, setback nonconformities, and then the fact that what he's doing with the setback nonconformities. Are, they're making them better. So in his circumstance, he didn't propose to, uh, eliminate a nonconformity. I don't think. There's a chart on the bottom of the second page. Um.
There is, there is, uh.
So I have.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put wrong.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to. We're all trying to get that, the story, the very story property. Even more so when we read the original.
George, excuse me.
I, I have one other check to.
Sure. Are, are we, are we at, at that point? That's fine.
Well, we're going, we're going through the history of.
Yeah, so this is, are we in that time? Yeah, are we in the right timeframe? Go ahead.
Sure. In February, I don't have the record with me, but I'll just.
Oh, what, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen?
Twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Mr. Valdez. Applied for and was wearing the building permit.
Oh, do we have that?
Uh, I can produce it. I don't have it.
Okay, I mean, but it exists.
It exists.
Okay.
Uh, it was for a small addition, a relatively small addition to the existing building.
This was prior to his brilliant plan to dismantle the home by himself.
Correct.
Okay.
Um. It was less than twenty percent increase and so therefore didn't require. Zoning board approval and could be permitted directly by building department and that's what happened.
Got it.
So. I think the dismantling started as a product of.
The possibly putting on this addition.
Possibly putting on this addition.
At least initially.
But then obviously things progressed from there, but I just, I, I just wanted to insert one more milestone. In this roadmap, so to speak.
I, you can't make this stuff up, as we like to say.
True.
Okay, so then there was the dismantling, then there was the cease and desist. Then there was the opinion. Right, we're done, and thank you, yeah, but it's not your fault. I think you want to decide a copy and it was never. Right, so.
Mister Chair, since we're, since we're just going through history here, I, I, um. I'm not arguing with what the inspector said, but he had the year wrong. That was twenty sixteen, not twenty seventeen.
Uh, beg your pardon.
Oh, the, the original building permit is February. The, the original building permit was because.
February of twenty sixteen.
Because it was, uh, it was in July of that year when he did the demolition.
That was twenty seventeen.
Demolition occurred in two thousand seventeen per Bob's letter.
I mean, but, yeah, I mean, Bob sent the cease and desist in July of twenty seventeen. Somewhere between February twenty sixteen and July of twenty seventeen, right? There was a dismantling of some sort, the cease and desist came in July of twenty seventeen. This opinion granting the special permit came in October twenty seventeen. Okay. Um. So we'll get that back to you. We'll make some copies of that so that it's completely filed. Okay.
So continuing, unless you have any questions.
No, no, that's, I'm sorry.
Thank you for getting the chronology correct. So, um. So again, that. One of the noteworthy things is a few noteworthy aspects of the fact that there was a zoning opinion on this. Which I think is still valid because findings don't expire and special permits do. Um, is that, uh. The relief was granted and, and the, and the dismantling had already occurred. So the zoning board has already determined the issue of abandonment with respect to the fact that that building. Was dismantled. At that time.
Okay, so, so you're. So. So it was made unhav- unhavocable. Right, by the dismantling as of that point in time. Right, I mean, I'm just.
If that's what it looked like, yeah.
Maybe, maybe not, right? Clearly it is now.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's disputing that anybody could live there right now. And that's fine, you're just trying to get the facts straight. Um, okay, so.
So. So after this, the, uh, the zoning decision was issued, which was a finding to reconstruct. And a special permit for the floodplain. Uh. The, uh, property was again listed for sale. And I gave you the second listing, which shows the house having been dismantled and listed as a, as a building opportunity. And that was, that was, that second listing is two thousand and eighteen. Okay? After two thousand and eighteen. Then COVID hit and a lot of uncertainty in the markets. There were issues. There also was polling. Of, uh, pending permits. Uh, anything that was pending at the time in twenty twenty. Um. By death, by order of the governor, didn't expire and was extended for the duration period of time of the. Uh. State of emergency in Massachusetts. So bottom line is. We have all of this, you go on COVID. And then I first met Mr. Valdez, so I can. Yeah.
Just, I have one question again, timeline. We have the original building permit for the extension in twenty sixteen. Right? Wherever it was. We have an opinion for fundamentally a reconstruction of the reconstruction. Great. Was it built, Bob, was a building permit for that big plant ever was issued, right? That's what you're saying.
So the permit that was issued was for a relatively small addition to the existing.
So with respect to the opinion for the special permit that was issued, so was this, so was this opinion? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Was this opinion vis a vis the extension? Or was it vis a vis a, a reconstruction of?
A reconstruction.
Okay.
So it was not an extension.
Okay, awesome. Question. Between the date of this opinion, which is October seventeenth, twenty seventeen, right? And March of twenty twenty. Was a building permit ever applied for?
I don't know the answer, so I can't answer the question.
Okay, and as far Bob, as far as you know.
As far as I know, no.
Okay. We're just going with what people know.
Speaking of what people know, so then I meet Mr. Valdez. After, uh, the beginning of, uh, COVID.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
He comes to my office. And he says to me, I. Have two properties in that neighborhood. And I've received correspondence from a lawyer. Saying that I can't access them. How can this possibly be? There are, how, there are, there are. I should be able to access these. Um. You wanted me to look into that because he couldn't sell the property. No one would invest in building anything on the property until they knew. That they were able to get access to it. And that this letter that was received. Didn't have any merit and that's why he came to me.
Right.
And I began the process of reviewing all of this. And then he went dark.
Okay.
And I.
So when, when did he disappear?
He disappeared two months after that, so it can be December of two thousand and twenty one. He actually went dark, uh, around Christmas. He actually went dark, uh, around Christmas, and then, um. What I understood to be the case was that he had fallen terminally ill and then died in February. So, two months after I met him, he died, twenty twenty one.
So, he died in February twenty twenty two.
Uh, twenty twenty two, I, I met him in December twenty one.
Okay.
And then. No one could do anything with this property until it went through probate.
Yep.
Which was many, many months, and I think that it, it fi- finally finished probing. In like June or July of twenty twenty two.
That's fast. Okay, I'm surprised I forgot that one, but okay.
Yeah, and then the property went on the market, and they probably had to deal with some of these issues and were struggling on the. Uh, issues that we're talking about, and eventually Frank comes along.
And, and this was bought in?
Twenty twenty three.
What, what, July twenty twenty, about a year later.
Yeah.
Right, a year after it kind of got out of probate, which, you know.
Less, less than a year.
Less than a year when it got out of probate, okay.
So, um, Frank, after having quit the property under contract under a purchase and sale agreement. Sat down and met with Bob. And when he sat and met with Bob. The discussion was, hey, we gotta do something with this structure, it's, it's an attractive nuisance. We need to make it insurable, what do we gotta do? So, in, in, in conjunction with that conversation, with the blessing of Bob. Additional dismantling occurred and walls were removed, and the property was secured with a fence.
Okay.
Which is the way it is now.
Right.
So, that's the process, or the, these are the facts of what occurred, and these facts. Because I understand that you guys all understand this waiver issue. Uh, are distinct and different than any facts that you've had in front of you relative to those types of requests. And I just wanted to make myself clear with respect to that.
We are very clear that everything before this board is a case by case analysis, right? It is very factually intensive, right, if we look at the facts before us, we try to apply the zoning. Uh, we, we, we run the dialogues as best we can.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so I just wanted to understand that, that whatever we've done, one, previously. This board, or in a different case, it seems to be similar, uh, has no precedential value about. I'm sorry, no precedential value. That being said, we do have opinions, our opinions, we are not part of the barter. Uh, so I just wanna make that, keep that on the record, I think we all agree with that, so.
And, and in that vein, and it's out of order on my little, uh, outline. But there were, I think, two recent matters where requests for waivers were requested. And granted in circumstances that, uh, probably were less.
Granted some, and we've recently, you know, said no to another, right? So, so where this falls, we will determine, hopefully, in the course of this evening, possibly not in light of the. Number of individuals that are here.
Okay.
Um, I do have one question, I will then turn it over to Bob for additional color commentary on it. Then I will, just so everybody understands, then I will open it up for questions with, for you. Right, I'm just laying out the process, right, this is where we have questions. You're gonna run this almost like a hearing, a real, a real trial hearing, right, so you're, you're putting on your case. We'll ask the questions, and then we will turn it over to the folks in the room. Who, at least some of which are represented by counsel, uh, and I will have counsel speak, uh, for their position. There's a submission here from counsel, from that counsel on this issue, and then we will open it up for more questions. What I will say now is that to the extent that, uh, we don't wanna be repetitive or duplicative. So people that are represented by counsel on this issue, please let counsel speak. To the extent that you are not part of, of that group of people represented by counsel here, you are absolutely free to speak. Uh, but what I don't wanna do is run this as a seven hour meeting, because same, the same people are saying the same thing over and over again. Okay? Right, so that being said.
I, I'm not done with my.
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna turn it, I just, that was a commentary, general commentary, I'm gonna let finish.
Thank you, so, um, and I'll try to, I'll try to move along, because I'm, I'm through much of it, um, but, um. So. Where was I?
Well, we went through the timeline, we got you to, uh, Ju- June, July of twenty twenty, June, July of twenty twenty three.
Yep. So.
Fancying, I, I mean, we're up to, you know, sixty, attractive, these fences up.
So those are the facts that I had to offer with respect to this, so now the, the, kind of I turn my attention a little bit to the legality of it. And so that everyone in the room understands, and the board understands, but, um. I, I believe when this board has discussed the, this concept of waiver and abandonment non-use. Uh, in the past, that Bob, and thankfully we're here, he's here tonight. Um, indicated generally that the intention of, uh, the zoning change regarding this subject. Uh, was to eliminate blight, and that being to discourage folks. Uh, who have structures that are either in this condition or better or worse, but really in tough shape. Um, to discourage them from keeping these structures in that state. For fear that if they remove the structures, they will have been deemed to have lost their grandfather rights. So, that is my understanding is the reason why. Um, the language exists in its present form, and I think that, and I'll let Bob confirm this if I'm right or wrong. But that when he authored the waiver language and the abandonment non-use language that we're about to talk about in section eight ten point one. That he specifically had this property. In mind as an appropriate candidate for a waiver if one were needed, am I right about that, Bob?
Yes, you're correct.
So, um. Specifically, section eight ten point one allows lawful structures that existed. In whole or substantial part, as of the effective date of the bylaw. To continue in less than until abandoned or not used for two years or more. So, um. If it is determined that a lawful structure existed in substantial part, as of the effective date. Which I think might be twenty, uh, April twenty twenty two, um, and. If it was abandoned or not used for two years or more, then this section allows you. To grant a waiver from that timeframe. Which is granted, would then allow you to grant the relief that I'm requesting tonight. Which is to, uh, section eight ten finding.
You said two years.
Say again?
You said it's two years.
Well, the old, the old.
The old one was two, and I probably misspoke, it is now four, yep, thank you. So, um, so you need to determine, did the structure lawfully exist in whole or substantial part? Uh, uh, as of that date, um, if so, was it abandoned or not used for years or more? And if it was not, then, um. Then you can issue a finding to raise and reconstruct, if it was, if, if, uh, if it was, then you would consider. Whether there would be a grant of a waiver, whether that's appropriate. So in this case, one of the facts that I outlined. Um, the fact that the ZBA already issued a final decision, final decision, not appealed. And did not determine that the structure was abandoned. Um, a decision which, because it was a finding with respect to section eight ten. Um, is still effective. Um, so I probably could have come in for a modification. And because the structure continues to substantially exist, and therefore its existence means it cannot be abandoned. And because the facts indicate there's actually an intention to not abandon the structure or the use. Uh, I believe, um. That. A waiver is not even necessary.
Correct.
But if it were, I think that this is appropriate. And, um, I might add that the property that Frank is still paying for water and sewer minimum charge of the water and sewer of the town. So the town still considers those to exist. Um. If you agree with me that a waiver is not required, because of the number of people in this room tonight, I'd still like you to. Tell us whether you believe that you would grant one. So that we don't have to go through this all over again in the event of an appeal. So.
You may see an appeal anyway, by the number of people in the room.
Possibly.
But, uh, okay.
So, this brings me to the final, the non-don. Um, I think I alluded, I didn't receive a copy of the letter, uh, in opposition from my brother over here behind me. So four forty tonight. Um. And so, uh. This is despite the fact that, that all of these abutters have had a notice. For about a month of this. And, um. You could decide whether you wanna consider the letter or not, I'm sure you will, because it is a public process. Um. But what I wanna say about it in substance is as follows. I have addressed in my presentation tonight the balance. Of the arguments in my presentation, and I'm gonna have nothing further to add. I do not intend to respond to this letter in writing. I do not need additional time to consider its contents. And I'm gonna be asking the board if it believes it has all of the information to close the hearing tonight. And move on to the next phase of deliberation. So, um, the letter cites two cases, both of which are lame court, trial court cases. Just like you said, every fact's different, we don't know what the facts of those cases were. They weren't really recited in the letter. But what we do know is that they are not binding on this board, they are not an appeals court, they're not the SJC. And what I do know about abandonment is that there's plenty of case law that talks about. In order to demonstrate abandonment, there has to be an intention to abandon. There's no intent, intention here. So the letter also. Contains a statement, I believe, although I had to read it pretty quickly. That reconstruction is not a permitted, uh, not permitted under the chapter forty of section six finding. Maybe I'm wrong, and I'll be corrected if I am, but I just wanna address that. There are thousands of cases in this board where you've granted reconstruction under forty six, forty eight, section six finding. Um. It would be crazy to take that position, especially in this town, and in fact, the building code requires reconstruction. When you're doing work that exceeds more than fifty percent of the value of the home. So, um. There was also a reference to a particular portion of the zoning bylaw concerning low impact development. You, you actually look at that, there are illustrations and so forth, that really concerns developments. Uh, high density developments, commercial types of developments, it deals, uh, i- its purpose is, um. To, uh, reduce stormwater runoff, improve water quality, improve high canopy tree cover. Natural landscaping and the production of food. Um. I don't believe it has any application here, even though we're in the floodplain overlay, but even if it did, this property does not have any trees. Um. Or, I'm sure, the stormwater situation on the property is worse than it would. Than it would be if we built this building, because it'd be capturing water that is, uh, clean water. And then it would be treated as opposed to the situation now where it's certainly not clean. I don't know if it's open to asbestos or whatever. Um, I think, uh, certainly.
It was built in nineteen hundred, right?
Yeah, maybe it's before asbestos, so, in any event.
It was all packed up.
I think the removal of the foundation and the replacement appears is actually, uh, a low impact development standard that would be applied, so. Um, that's pretty much all I have, so, thank you, welcome.
This is a long, uh, storied history of this property, and thank you for helping us kind of play it out with us. And, excellent presentation, so, thank you. Uh, I think we understand your position very well, before I turn it over to the board, I have a question for Bob. That is, relates to when, what, the, because we don't have really legislative history, but we have Bob. So, who authored eight ten point one? Uh, when eight ten point one was written and it was discussed, the clause that said abandoned or not used. For a period of four years or more. I happen to be an attorney, my job is to make four sentences, you know, the terms of court, they do that all day, so. The question I have is, was it? That the time limit, uh, conformed to the bridge to unless or until abandoned, right? Or not used for a period of four years or more, except that this time limit may be waived by the zoning board of appeals. The, at this, the, this time limit may be waived, when you were looking at it, was it abandoned for four years or more? Or not used for four years or more, and either one of those things could be waived, or was it, if it's abandoned?
Right, I understand, I think.
You understand my question?
I think so.
Right, because that, there, there's an argument that's gonna be made very soon, right, about abandonment. And how critically we parse that argument, right, relates in some part to what you're looking at.
Thank you. Um. Obviously, I'm not an attorney.
Now, I, I'm looking from the legislative history, what was, what was the discussion in the mind of the grafters at the time? With respect to that clause and that clause alone?
Without, without checking a previous edition of the zoning bylaws. I'm going to give you my recollection that this phrase was lifted directly or not changed.
Correct.
It used to say two years, it was changed to say four years.
Correct.
In order to give the parties a little bit more time in case of probate, in case of.
Sure.
Extended divorce proceedings.
Yep.
Whatever, to rectify the situation.
If I go with insurance for three years because of a fire, right, it's happened, right?
Sure. So, we've discussed this before, but I believe the original intent of the rafters of this bylaw, as it was originally stated. Was to make sure that this kind of thing didn't happen, because if you didn't fix it in two years. Then you couldn't fix it. And looking at that, and the town attorney agreed with me as we discussed it, that's, that's a taking of a cut.
Sure.
In other words, if you, that property that has value, that has a use that could be restored and then sold, and a lot of these properties. Are along the seacoast and are therefore quite valuable and quite desirable. Uh, if I tell you you can't use that, uh, because you didn't hurry up and fix it after it was damaged. I've taken it from you, and I need to compensate for that, or the town, that's. So that's why we looked hard at this bylaw, in order to give some way out of that particular. So that's why we looked hard at this bylaw in order to give some way out of that particular situation.
And and.
So let me just.
Oh, no, I continue ahead, please.
So I wrote the letter to quickly came into the office around four thirty. And. My reaction to that, which I wrote. I hope I can read it, I'm overly close to covering.
And when you say the letter, you mean the.
Uh, to the.
The opposition?
The opposition, the letter of opposition to this project on the board. It says unless or until abandoned, they're not used for a period of four years or more, except that the time limit may be waived by the zoning board of appeals, et cetera. So I believe the letter. Tried to make the distinction between the time limit. Being waived. And the concept of abandonment or not used, be somehow overcome or disregarded.
What we will hear in a few minutes.
I I understand, but but my response is based on that assumption.
That's fine, please.
In, in my mind, when I, when I wrote this, when I read the original. And then decided how it might be changed, it better serve. Republic, I mean, that's what it's, that's what all of the zoning is for, it serves the public. In my mind, the conditions. Which trigger. The time period running that four year time period. Or a time period that the zoning board might decide to wait, extend.
Right, that's.
The conditions which trigger that are abandonment or lack of years. So it can be one of those, it can be both of those. Uh, but to try and. Disconnect those from the concept. Of the period of four years or some timeframe. To me, I I can't do it. So if you look at, I mean, I I can't, I can't do it in, in my mind, in.
Right.
In, in my reasoning mind, and I can't do it in an, in an English. Parsing, what is this, you know, how, how does this sentence serve together?
So where are those words made? The way you look at that provision is basically reading it as abandoned or not, not otherwise. Used.
Well, if you've abandoned it, clearly you're not.
So any type of non-use, right, abandonment is a specific type of non-use, there may be other types of non-use.
Right, and you know, I I realize there are nuances here, you know, you could be not using a building but still paying taxes on.
Right.
And I would have to think the court might say, well, you're using it if you're paying taxes on.
Or you're not having a ban.
Right, or you have.
Or, you know, we talked about taxes at one of our prior meetings and some times you, you know, because there are mistakes and errors and so forth. The um, and it is subjective, but. What I want to add to this discussion is that um. Abandonment of a structure. Um, but then it says non-use, and so zoning has use all over it, right, that you have a use chart. And what you could you, what, what you cannot. What you absolutely cannot abandon and what you cannot not use. For purposes of losing a grandfather right. Is a right that's allowed as a right. And here you have a zoning district. They're not grandfathers for a single family dwelling. Their grandfather for the structure. The use is allowed as a right, so you can't even lose that. Correct, the other thing is that the structure. There's definitely a structure there exists. It has value because it exists, which is why it wasn't fully taken down. So. You can't abandon something that exists because the mere existence of it. Isn't a non-use of it. It's there. It exists. Therefore, you got the use, you're using it. So that's what I'd say about that, plus the fact that the abandonment questions are relevant. Because this board is already determined in its dismantled state, you don't even have to address that issue anymore. That it wasn't abandoned because they allowed a grandfather right to continue. It wouldn't have been grandfather had it been abandoned already.
As of October twenty seventeen.
Right, but it was already dismantled.
I I hear your argument, I said as of, as of twenty seventeen, and then it's a question of what happened between twenty seventeen and. All.
No, it's not, because, because the decision was rendered. To allow an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use. That decision's final. What, whatever happened after that? For purposes of abandonment doesn't matter because it already was dismantled at that point. This is a decided issue. That's, that's my response to that.
That's fair, that's, I understand your response, you know, I will, I will note a couple of things, which is. As far as we know, no building permit ever pulled. And as far as we know, no.
Nor does one have to.
So your, your position is that an opinion of this board is perpetual regardless of the activities taken by. Person it was granted to. In any kind of reasonable timeframe.
My opinion is that you will find no language in zoning bylaw, no language in the building code. That says that findings. Expire. The only language that you're going to find is that a special permit expires after two years. If, if uh, it hasn't been made to use up or whatever.
Right.
And this is a finding, and there is a distinction, because the zoning bylaw before two thousand and fourteen. Had an eight ten finding to be a special permit. And it was changed to make it a finding at that point. And that was a very intentional issue and discussed issue with this board. And. There's a distinction, that's why chapter forty eight, section six says. Um, the special permit or permit granting authority may make a finding. If it's a permit granting authority, it's a spec- it's a finding, if it's a special permit granting authority. It requires three out of three votes versus two out of three votes, so that's, you can weigh that however you want.
Yeah, yeah, no, there, there is a difference, I don't. Uh, you know, we can, we can theoretically argue about the scope of the mining.
Yeah.
Of permit grant. This post, um. Bob, before I turn it over to the board for additional questions and before I turn it over to uh, the general group. Anything else that we would like to say at this point in time?
No, not, not really a lot, I only just to go back to a point that Terry D E C made. And in fact, whatever it's for, if this was one of the structures. Uh, eighty one Surfside, this building and a, and a building on Holly Road. Um, which having received many complaints over the years in the office about their condition and the fact that they were hazardous and. Wrote vermin and were attracted nuisances and fire hazards and all of that. Specifically rewrite into this and they, they've, they've been done better and may be done better in the future. But that was the, that was the reason for it, that's what we were trying, that's the problem, and we're trying to address that.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'll turn it over to the board for a set of questions, at this point. We won't do no questions. But I'm trying to keep this in sort of an orderly progress of some sort. So does anybody on the board have any questions of attorney advocacy at this point in time?
Jeff, the D gives a right of way over thirty foot right of way to our northeastern property. Obviously, you were engaged to research that issue, did you find any other access points or is that someone that accessed the property?
The lot abuts. Two. Whether you call it a private road or a private way on one side. And a right of way on another side. And what the um. What, I didn't get to really develop the issue, but there were a lot of thoughts that were. Number one, there's a prescriptive right if they've been using this uh, since nineteen hundred. Over Meadow Road from Cituit Avenue, which is uh, the case. And then there is a stop all argument to be made of an implied easement that granted property is granted.
There's a way to handle it.
So there were those particular issues and I was envisioning rather than, because the only title issue I saw was exactly what you, what you said. So I was envisioning, maybe I'm going to litigate this. And I'm pretty certain I would win because the property's been accessed since nineteen hundred. But it has frontage on both sides. And um, the reason why I call. The right of way. The um, front yard. Which is different um, than, than like logic would indicate is be precisely because. The D does contain that right. Um, and so that's why I did it. But my opinion is that this property, because it has frontage, for the sole reason it has frontage on Meadow Road. Can utilize Meadow Road. But no one's really, the property's been insured by a title company, so it doesn't really matter at this point.
Anybody else? Alright, so I will turn it over to the folks in the room. Council, you, you seem to be representing the most number of people here or online, why don't you come up and present your case?
Do you want me to leave or stay or?
Well, you can, you can do what, well.
I'm just sliding, I'm just sliding over.
Yeah, you can slide over.
Jeff, why don't you just move the light?
Yeah, maybe you might be, yeah. And you can slide over a little bit.
Feel like I should stretch a little bit, it's been.
My name is Neil Glick, I'm an attorney with Kirsten Horn of the Finstein, and I represent uh, Joanne Wyckoff. Uh, one fifty four Turner Road. And uh, several residents uh, who have an unincorporated. Uh, group known as the Cituit Salt Marsh Stewardship Initiative. Uh, I do not know if I represent all the people in this room, um, I don't pretend to speak for all of the people in this room. Um, so I will uh.
You seem to be speaking for the biggest concentration.
Well, I don't even know that, sir. Uh, and I don't think anybody does, so I think we uh, we've, we've listened at great length. Uh, and let me preface this by saying. I served on my town's planning board for five years, I served on my country, my town's conservation commission. I know that the hour is late. I know that you guys have a thankless task. I know that you get paid an extraordinary amount of money to volunteer your time uh, in your public service. And I respect that tremendously, um, so I will try to be as concise as I can.
We.
But I, I do want to say though, that I do think. In the spirit of fairness, uh, it's important that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And uh, while we've sat patiently and listened to the applicant, applicant's attorney and the good questions. That have come from the, the chair and the board. Um, I do think that the good folks in this room uh, should have their uh, say as well. Um, so in, in that uh, spirit, I will uh, again, try to be as concise as I can. Um, you have a letter from me, uh, I think it is uh. Pretty self-explanatory, uh. So I won't, certainly won't read it. Um, but I do think that uh. That I, it addresses all three of the requests that have been made by the applicant. And I'll take them in order, not necessarily in the order they were given to, presented to tonight, but in the order that they were presented to in the application. And the first is the waiver under eight ten point one. Um, as the chair pointed out, we have a distinctly different view of what that uh, language says. In my view, as expressed in the letter, is clearly that there is no waiver for abandoned. There can be a waiver for the four year time period or grace period, as I would say. Uh, but there is no waiver for abandonment.
And, and the grace period only applies to non-use?
The grace period, they both apply, both apply to non-use. But uh, yes, the grace period only applies to non-use.
So your, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to interrupt you, other than I'm trying to get this super clear for the board, right, for the eventual.
Well, both abandonment and non-use, as you pointed out, Mr. Shetty. As you correctly point out, they, they both stem from the same generic notion, okay? But there's a legal concept of abandonment. And there's the bylaw concept of non-use for four years, which is a grace period.
Right.
That is built into the bylaw, not into the common law of abandonment.
So your, your position is if, if we determine, or if it is determined, forget we determine. If we, if it is determined that a property is abandoned. No matter how, when or where, once it is abandoned, right? We cannot implement. That section of the bylaw and grant relief in the form of building, rebuilding that building.
Correct.
So an abandoned, an abandoned building cannot be rehabilitated.
I.
No, I, I just want to know your position.
Well, I, my position is, is much more, if you will, nuanced than that. Um, with respect, I would say that uh, yes, that is my position in terms of abandonment. But it doesn't matter because we still have non-use for four years, so we get it either way. You don't, you don't make finding anyway, but um, but the uh, the um. Uh, the concept of abandonment is very different, and the bylaw does say or. Does say or abandonment or the grace period. And then the grace, and then it says you can make a waiver of that grace period, that time limit. But it doesn't say you can make abandonment, a, a waiver of the abandonment. And that is reflected, reflect, uh, reflective, excuse me, of the case law. And the case law is really clear, and while my brother says always just land court, uh, uh, trial court cases. The land court is the expert court in these matters. And the land court is where an appeal would go, I'm not saying there's going to be an appeal. But the land court hears these things day in and day out. And I've cited probably the two leading cases of land court, one written by the chief justice of the land court at the time, Judge Piper. Um, and they make it very clear that it is abandonment is a totally separate. Issue from in the cases they were talking about, the, the standard two-year grace period. But it would apply, of course, to the more generous uh, grace period that Cituit has imposed for the four-year grace period. Um, so that, and as I say, no plumbing, no windows, no doors, not maintained, used or inhabited. Uh, interior gutted, no longer reset, has improved, it's been abandoned, period, full stop. And it shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of the zoning bylaw. That is the common law, black letter law of the, of the county.
So I, again, I'm trying to crystallize this. So what, what do you believe? What is your client believe, what do the people that you represent believe can be done? With this, this structure and this property?
Yeah, and it, and it all comes back to that in very different ways, we'll go through all of the steps, all of the, the relief that's requested. This is not a traditional. Um, add in addition to a non-conforming use, this is not a traditional even a raise and reconstruct where people come to you. Where people come to you as they have tonight, I've been sitting, listening to the agenda tonight, as they have it, well. You know, we we plan to tear it down and build anew and we wanna do the right thing and come to you first and get the relief that we need. No, this is a disappeared structure. No structure and no structure for years. And now they wanna take, make use of uh the reconstruction provisions. This is very different, this is a truly raised, abandoned. My brother uses a term I've never heard before, I've been doing this, you can tell by the gray hair, I've been doing this for decades. I've never heard the term dismantling. I've never heard that. There's no such thing, I've never seen it in any case law, I've never seen it in bylaw, you won't find it in your bylaw. There's no dismantling. The the property was raised, it was demolished, okay? It wasn't dismantled. That implies some sort of partial removal. No, this was taken out. I've shown you the pictures, you got the pictures.
So if this was, yeah, so if this was completely, so this is, you're saying that this is completely demolished, it's done. So your clients are completely okay for this to sit the way it is, right? Because there's nothing there. Right, it's perfectly fine. It's not a blight, it's not dangerous, it's not anything.
I'm not, I I'm I'm not here to just to address that kind of hypothetical. I'm just saying that the notion that there could be a waiver under eight ten point one. Is not allowed when it's been abandoned, especially for the length of time that this case, if this property is being abandoned.
Would you call it selective demolition, which is similar to that of dismantle?
Selective demolition?
I mean, so Division two CSI construction, there's selective demolition, there's demolition, removal of a house with an excavator. And then there's selective demolition, similar to dismantling, which I think is what you were trying to apply.
Well, there's nothing, there's no concept in zoning or in your bylaw, and I've read it, that talks about selective demolition, but I think would you be. Mentioning there is, okay, you take down a wing. You take down, you know, a portion of the house, you take down uh the the back of a house, then to add on to it. Well, that's a different story, that's an addition, okay? And you do demolition to get an addition in most cases. Sometimes, as uh as one of your members pointed out in a prior case, sometimes you build a new building. But in this, in um but in this case, uh there wasn't selective demolition. Just it's gone, there's no roof, there's no walls, there's no floors, there's, there's, there's nothing there. I've been over for forty plus years. I've taken houses down to the platform. And built them back up. Yeah, personally, yeah. So I have selectively demolished. Right. I have dismantled buildings all the way down to the platform and built them back up. So I I swear, I have a real problem with your saying that, you know, trying to define that there is no such thing as dismantling, dismantling. Hundreds of houses. Well, the word exists, I'm just saying it doesn't exist in the law. And I'm not saying that you can't do that, I'm saying that that you can't issue a waiver under eight ten point one. For an abandoned property. Okay, that's very different from, I think, the the example you're giving is it's part and parcel of a reconstruction. This wasn't part and parcel of reconstruction. This is the the timeline, and I haven't seen my brother's timeline, but the timeline here, you have to keep in mind, is there was demolition. Total abandonment. And now coming back and saying, oh, well, now we wanna call it a reconstruction. Uh and and so.
So man, yeah, yeah, please, please.
If three years and eleven months comes, we're approaching that four year, and he goes and stands up one wall. So you're working, again, I have the privilege of doing all my homework, I'm sure you do too, it takes us a little bit longer, my wife feeds me, right? So is that. Belief, does the clock start from that point, I would ask you guys? Does the clock reset of four years because he hasn't, he's present, he's actively working on it? So does it now? Three years and eleven months, the clock resets and it's four years from that date?
If you're, if you're asking me, um I'll 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 tell you my experience, which is every town is different. Every town is different. I I've I've been before a town where the building inspector maintained that if if you left one interior non-low bearing wall. That that qualifies.
Well, I'm just saying from.
But I've I've been to other towns where they required over fifty percent of the pre-existing structures.
I'm not talking about leaving a wall, I'm talking about if you went there to go build a wreck, one wall.
It it was, it was cleaner than it is now, there's a foundation. Right, three months, three years and eleven months, he builds one potentially low-bearing wall.
North gable end, I call it, just working on the, north side gable end, does the clock reset?
Right, well, that's the four-year, that's the four-year grace period that you thought. And you know, maybe that would, maybe that would work, maybe, I don't know, but that's not the situation you're talking about. I'm not, I I I don't wanna address hypotheticals.
On this, I'm I'm, I'm saying this relative to this timeline, there's been a lot of activity over a period of time. And then we hit COVID, where we arguably hit a pause. So to me, we'd have to go back with twenty twenty, which would be twenty sixteen. If I'm understanding all this correctly, but between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, a lot happened. Twenty twenty came. And everything up put on hold, or there was waivers or, I don't know when those are released, admittedly, if they even happen. But I'm seeing a lot of activity from a developer and a builder, which, you know.
You see, well, try, if if I may, and I again, I'm not trying to interrupt you, and I, but I I know. We're on the clock, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to what you're saying. There's, there wasn't any activity, there was paper activity. There was coming before this board.
So not abandoned then, there's there's off-site activity.
There was no activity on this site.
Yeah, no.
He let, he let his special permit expire. He let his special permit expire, it it disappeared after two years. So he didn't do anything. Now, you can, there can be all sorts of excuses for that, but you know, deadlines are deadlines. And and you know, you you could, you can go from the dog ate my homework to, you know, uh to I I I got ill or whatever. The, the, in fact, in one of the cases that I cite, in one of the cases that I cite.
I haven't read the letter, admittedly.
Okay, well, I I don't blame you. My my wording can be boring and I'll tell you what, if you can't go to sleep some night, read it and and you'll go right to say it. No, seriously, one of the cases that I cite, the Chiroloose case, Chiroloose case. Um the judge even recites that uh that the developer. The developer's daughter was run over and killed by a car. And he went into a period of mourning. And the the judge says, I understand, that's a horrible, 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 he writes, it's a horrible personal. Uh personal tragedy. But I can't let that determine whether that was, the property was abandoned or not. Because the facts show that the intent was to abandon. And the facts here show that the intent was.
See, this is what I was gonna, this is what I was just gonna get at. Is if the owner of the property owner is actively.
Taking steps, speaking with the building inspector.
Speaking with the building inspector, speaking with his attorney, you know, deciding, trying to find out what his, you know, available next steps are. Speaking to the building department, trying to find out whether they have available. Is that not activity, is that not intent to continue with the process? Not intent to abandon, if he was intending to abandon, he would have talked to his attorney and said. Uh what do I, what what can I do?
Yeah, I think, I I think the answer to that is no, because it, talk is talk, talk is cheap. Uh there wasn't anything to be done on the problem. But not to belabor that point, okay? Not that, you know, we can, we could argue that point again, I know I'm on the clock, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend the whole evening arguing that point.
We want you to lay out your.
All right, then, so go to the four-year standard, okay? Go to the four-year standard. I've attached the uh the uh property cards, property appraisal cards. If if even if you haven't read the letter, take a look at Exhibit C. I've got four fiscal years of property cards here. Abandoned, 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 no use, no building, no building value, okay? That's how the assessor assessed it, and I even talked to him, he said, yeah, there's, there's no value to it. So because it wasn't there, there was nothing there, there was no, nothing to to value the structure. Okay, so.
Because it wasn't a structure.
What?
If there is a structure.
No, there wasn't a structure.
Oh, oh, no.
Sir, if there's a structure, then it would have some value, the the property tax card shows land value and structure value. Okay, that's the term that they they use. And when you evaluate, when you value the structure at zero dollars, I think it's fair to say.
So the fact it has no value, it doesn't exist?
That's right, because it didn't exist, and look at the, look at the picture there.
When it catches fire, right, that's gonna be a mythical fire. Right, it doesn't exist.
We're not talking about catastrophe, we're not talking about this. We're talking about a a decision, a choice that was made in twenty sixteen and uh to to demolish.
So I I think you, I think you're overarguing your case in a way that is not behoarding your client at this point. That being said, I will, I will let you, absolutely, I want you to to lay it all out. And we understand your position that um abandon, you believe it is A, abandoned. And that abandonment pursuant to the uh our bylaws is not waivable, right? It's been abandoned, your position's been abandoned, abandoned for more than four years, right? And that that is not waivable.
No, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I say my initial position is it's been abandoned and that cannot be waived. And I, my fallback position, as I say in the letter, is okay, so you disagree with that. You still have the four-year uh the four years of non-use, which is waivable if you make a finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I'm getting there, okay? I didn't, in fact, I get to spend all my time on on the on the abandonment issue. I think the abandonment issue, though, does speak for itself. And I will say also in connection with that, with all due respect to the building inspector, and I understand you. It's it's good to get legislative history, but the legislature is town meeting. Town meeting passed that bylaw. So uh and town meeting read the the language and imposed the language and the attorney general was approved. So um so it's, it's uh the legislative history is at town meeting as opposed to. With by next to be. Um now, that gets us to the next point, which is a special permit under four seventy point six F, which. Uh my brother seems to think is not all that uh, not all that important, but it is. You have to find um under, under this waters, floodplain and watershed development district that. That the drainage will not be impacted in order to issue a special permit under four seventy point six F. Four seventy point six F is extremely important. It's, I I give Cituit a tremendous amount of credit for inserting this into its bylaw. It is, it it supplements and indeed enhances in some ways. Uh wetlands protection and stormwater runoff, which are oftentimes not the subject of the zoning bylaw. But in this case it is, and it says that it is to protect against unsuitable development in marshes, bogs, lowlands and long watercourses. Which is exactly where this property sits, okay? And it's supposed to be more restrictive than the rest of the bylaw. In fact, it says that if any provision in the floodplain watershed protection district is more restrictive than other provisions of the bylaw. The provisions of the floodplain wetlands protection district shall take precedence, okay? So when they say talk, when they say that you can't um uh impede drainage from the property. And you can't give a special permit uh required under the floodplain and watershed protection district. Um you have to look long and hard at that and make a determination that it won't. Um that it won't affect drainage, and we're going to get to that. Now, I also cited in connection with that, uh Section seven fifty one of the bylaw. Which requires, and it doesn't exclude this project. My brother is wrong about that, there's no exclusion for this kind of project under seven fifty. And uh in fact, I spoke to the planning director about that very subtly, I asked her that question, and she said, yes, it is included. Yes, it does apply, okay? So seven fifty. Says that uh. That you um, that you have to in in include low-impact development and stormwater runoff considerations. And techniques in your plan, we don't even know what this plan is. All we have is a footprint, all we have is a a a surveyor drawing a footprint on the uh on the on the survey. We don't have an elevation, we don't, we know it's supposed to be thirty-five feet high. We don't know how many ruins it's gonna have, we don't know what the total volume is, we know the, we know the square footage of the. Footprint is fourteen percent greater than what was there before, going back to twenty fifteen or sixteen. But we don't know anything about it. And we certainly don't understand what's happening on the rest of the property, how much hard space there's going to be, how much parking there's gonna be. How many, how much driveway there's gonna be. Um so you can't possibly uh know that the sustainable design and low-impact development requirements have met. Similarly, you can't know what the drainage impact is gonna be, because you don't know how much impermeable surface is gonna happen. I'm sorry, if you want to ask a question.
Hey, can I ask a question with property?
Yeah.
Frank, are you familiar with conservation laws in the town of Salt Harbor?
Pretty much.
So you're aware of building in, you know, wetlands, marshes, and the restrictions that, you know, are imposed. On construction of those areas?
Sure.
Well, and that's a nice, no, I I mean, that that's a, that's an interesting comment, but.
Your point is that seven fifty, that it's that it's entitled design review for business, commercial, mixed-use and multifamily development. Is applied, is applicable to any single-family uh unit.
Seven fifty is not applicable to them. It says it's applicable to.
Right, single-family, single-family, a conscious, single-family development.
General provisions affecting all districts.
All districts where there is.
Second, seven fifty, seven fifty, sustainable design and low-impact development techniques are necessary in zoning districts. Where a substantial area is located in the water resource protection overlay district and the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. So it's, this is that, this is that area, okay? So it is applicable, and the planning director so confirmed. So um. So we don't have any information for you to have on 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 those requirements. And you can't, without those, I would respectfully note that you can't make a determination um under seven, four seventy point six F. Without that information. And the fact, sir, that the. Conservation commissioner or the developer might be familiar with those, with different requirements. Under the wetland bylaw or under uh Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, State Wetlands Protection Act. Is not what we're talking about. We're talking about this board's obligations under four seventy point six F and seven fifty. Now, that brings us to. Eight ten. Once again, eight ten is for. Once again, 810 is for structures. And structures is not defined, I was surprised, it's not defined in the bylaw. And there was a comment before that structures means anything built. Well, that's just not the case, that's not, that's untrue. Um, there are, there are zoning bylaws constantly that deal with, uh, some, several things that are built but are not deemed structural, from fences under six foot high to swimming pools to sheds sometimes. So, uh, this deals with structures. Structures is not defined, but what is defined are both pre-existing non-conforming structures and existing structures. And both of those definitions deal with existing structures. And an existing structure, as defined in the bylaw, is something that exists in fact on the date that the application was filed. That's February 2024. And there is no doubt, no doubt, that this so-called structure did not exist in fact on February 2024. There was nothing there except for pile of rubble and effets, that's it. So, um, so there's no structure on the property, and 810 has to deal with a structure. And, um, under 810.2C, um, that's a finding, it requires a finding under General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. Um, it incorporates 48, Section 6. And, uh, the applicant is, um, and, and it goes on to say.
When, cut, real quick, it's not on you, uh, please, if you could keep it down. If you need to speak, please go outside of the room during, during this, because it, it gets picked up on the mic here, it's distracting, it's, it's.
It goes on to say, uh, in your bylaw, that it can't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And as I just pointed out to you, existing non-conforming structure is a defined term, and it uses the term existing structure. Existing structure is defined, and it means a structure that exists in fact at the time of the application. So I would respectfully suggest that you can't make a finding of, that it's not substantially more detrimental to an existing non-conforming structure when there isn't a structure to compare it. That structure doesn't exist. We're not talking about comparing it to the 2016 or 2015 structure, which didn't exist, which doesn't exist and hasn't existed for the better part of a decade. Um, so, um, even if, even if, uh, you get to, uh, 810.2C, you don't have anything to compare it to, and you don't have anything to determine whether it's better or worse than, for the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, now, I lay out in my letter, again, even if you disagree with that, and I don't think you should, but I, even if you disagree with that, then it is more, significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I want to have other people talk about that, because, uh, whether I represent them or not, I think they have the right to present that to you. But it's clear that this project, as proposed, will have detrimental effects on the neighborhood. It's 14% larger than going back to the non-existent prior, uh, prior home. Well, we, we don't know anything about it, except that we can see from the footprint plan that it has multiple decks, so it's going to be 35 feet high with multiple decks, and those are going to be lit presumably, they're going to have light impacts on people. We know this is a tight-knit chock-a-block neighborhood. It's going to be lights in people's neighbor, in people's bedrooms, it's going to be more cars, uh, more, more square footage. It could be a two-family, two-family would be allowed as a right in this district?
No.
Well, we say no, but we don't know, you don't have before you any plans. He doesn't call it a single-family home.
You wouldn't require twice?
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, I'm.
You, you're absolutely right, sir, I, I, I apologize.
Thank you, apology accepted. Uh, we don't know. And, uh, and, and so we, uh, there could be many more cars there. It could be, uh, that means, again, more headlights, but it also means more hard surface, because we don't see any plan for a garage. Um, I don't think that's on the footprint, so it's going to be parked there. Uh, cars are going to be parked on the property, either on, presumably on hardscape, maybe not, but even so. Water has to go somewhere, and when there's a storm surge coming off the ocean or just regular flooding going into that adjacent, uh, uh, wetland, that adjacent salt marsh with a water course that you're required to consider under 470, uh, that water and those oil drippings and whatnot from those cars are going to go either onto the neighbor's properties. Like I said, water goes somewhere, it finds a way. It goes either on the neighbor's properties or into the salt marsh, which is a very important resource for that, for that neighborhood. So that's detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, there's going to be more noise with a larger footprint, perhaps a two-family. Uh, there's going to be more noise for the neighborhood. Um, so, uh, all of these things, and again, I'll let people describe it in more detail about how they feel about the detriment to the neighborhood. Um, but there's also the impact on access. And if you look at, again, you don't have to read the whole letter, look at my last exhibit, Exhibit, app, is it, or Exhibit E. This is, and you all have it in front of you, that's Meadow Road. That's the only access to this property. We can talk about this so-called 35-foot right-of-way, but the 35-foot right-of-way doesn't go anywhere. That's the newsflash on the 35-foot right-of-way. It doesn't go to a public way or even a private way. It just exists and stops, it doesn't go anywhere. So the only way you're getting in and out of this property is on Meadow Road. This is Meadow Road. It's a private way, it's extremely narrow, it's extremely narrow when it gets near the property. That's Meadow Road right there, not, this is part of it, but that's the part that goes to the property. It goes through a salt marsh, you can see that this is all cattail marsh, okay?
So, no, I want to, by clarification, are, are there any other homes in the area that use that road for access?
Yes, they do.
And prior to 2015, when there was, you would agree, a home on that property, was that the road, was that one of the ways that that property was accessed?
I suspect it was, but that was a smaller property, and we're now talking about something that's 14% bigger. So, um, and possibly a two-family. So we have, uh, this is going to be overused or could be overused, is going to impact the marsh on both sides. Uh, that's, that vegetation, which again protects the marsh, going back to your, your 470 requirements, um, and it's going to, uh, destroy some of this vegetation likely with more cars. So those are other impacts. And on top of that, you can see that Meadow Road is already in not great shape. It's not, it's not paved. Uh, you can see the water on this, in, uh, in a relatively dry period, Meadow Road has water. Uh, so to the extent Meadow Road gets overburdened, if you will, that's going to cause detriment to the neighborhood. So now, just going through a couple of other things.
Meadow Road, so your, your position is that Meadow Road was not overburdened in 2015, but would be if a home were instructed on that property today.
No, I think, I think the chair is putting words in my mouth, I'm not saying that at all. You're not here to talk about, um, a property that was lawful and grandfathered. Property was laid out in 1900. I agree with my brother about that, property was laid out in 1900. God knows when that particular structure in 19, in 2015 was built, but it was probably part and parcel of what was built in 1900, I don't know. What I do know is that doesn't exist anymore, and we're looking at, and again, it all comes back to that point. Um, you have to, I, I believe you have to look at it as if there's no building there, because there isn't. And so we're not talking about what the situation was in 2015. We're talking about the situation in 2022.
I understand your point.
Okay.
Um, I, I have one additional question, and then I'll let you.
Okay.
Wrap it up, which is, what is your, your client's name? There is, to your point, there is nothing there. So is it their preference? Oh, and I do have a question, uh, either for the, for the owner of the property, for Attorney Delisi. Um, how is that home heated when it, when it was?
Gas furnace.
Gas furnace. Um, so it's your position that there's nothing there, so nothing needs to be done, right? So, so you've made a case that, um, there's potential there for damage to the salt marsh if a, if a home is built. There, there is a potential for, uh, uh, other types of dangers associated with, with storm surge, right? If a home is built. So I, I query the following, with what is not there, given a storm surge and a non-existent two-by-four that goes flying through somebody's window, or, you know, again, given whatever old toxic stuff is on what is not there, leaching into the salt marsh, that is preferable to your client rather than a construction of a home on that property? Let's, let's, I'm just trying to understand the ask.
Okay, well, first of all, it's not our job to decide what the owner does for the property, but I will address a couple of points you made. First of all, it was, it was discussed earlier, and this is one thing I was going to get to. Um, somebody mentioned asbestos, uh, on the debris that was there. That's not the case, there was an asbestos removal, uh, it's in the building, Jack. Uh, I've got it here if you'd like to see it. Uh, asbestos survey, I should say, done, um, uh, back in 2016, maybe 2017, found no asbestos, um, and nothing needed to be removed. So the, the notion that there's this toxic waste dump on the property, I think is wrong. Uh, if there is, if there is, then I would expect that Bob and the Board of Health would probably want to cure that fact, and I think my clients would certainly be in favor of that. Um, and that probably shouldn't be done, but, um, the answer to your, the answer to your question, I think, is a variance, it's as simple as that. If they want to build on this property as a non-conforming lot, then they should come before you for a variance. They're trying to do it the.
But that's not the question I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought, I'm sorry, then I thought that.
What does your clients ask? Your clients, your clients do not want this built under this process.
They don't.
And, and you have made arguments of why no building should be built on this property. Your arguments are, nothing should be built here, right? No, no, your arguments are that nothing should be built here, okay? They are focused on the detriment to the neighborhood if a house would go on this property. You just told me, you just spent a lot of time talking to us about cars and damage to the salt marsh and all that. So please, right, I, we want to hear what everybody has to say about this, but do please be consistent, right?
I, I think I am being consistent, I think.
So, so what is, what do they want to happen on this property? That's what I'm asking.
They don't, I, it's not what they necessarily want to have happen on this property, it's what legally should happen on this property. The applicant, I mean, please hear me out, because I'm trying to answer you as quickly as I can. The applicant is trying to do it the quick, cheap, and frankly, unappealable way, which is to, um, to do it by special permit, by multiple special permits, um, based on the standard, the standards that we don't think apply. If, if mister, if the, if the applicant wants to build on this property, and God love him, it's a free country, and, and last time I checked, it, it's still, we still value private property. He's got a remedy, he can get a variance, he can come to this board for a variance, and that needs to meet statutory requirements, and he'll have to meet them, and he'll have to be able to comply.
So you, again, and I'll, I do want you to finish, but this is sort of, it's important to me, and maybe, and may or may not be important, I'll let the board. Uh, you've made arguments that a building here, at least as proposed, would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which, which tells me that your clients believe that a building, right, is here substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, anyway, right?
No, no.
Because this one, this one is only 16% greater in square footage, 14% greater in square footage than the building that existed there.
Probably vertically, I'm guessing, too.
Right, then wait, when the building that existed there in 2015, I am not clear of whether there is any increase in footprint from the 2015 building, right?
No, no, there is, that, that's, that's what the zoning, that, that's what the application said. I didn't make that up, that's on my number, that's their number.
It's greater, it's greater than the.
The footprint is 14% greater.
The total square footage.
The total square footage, I said, I, I know, I, I've been careful.
It's still within the, the pre-existing building envelope.
I, no, it's not.
It's within the building envelope, top of the lot.
Yes.
It meets all setbacks, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But, but can I, can I, just because I just want to, um. The footprint of the building is the portion of the building that touches the ground. Our proposed building is going to reduce that amount by a significant amount. My, my position compared to what's there now, there's a, there's a full building.
Compared to the 2015, that, let's, I, I want to.
It's the aggregate of the circumference of the file is the footprint.
Yeah.
Where, where.
There's some debris there now.
Yeah, except this is on tiles, or it's not touching the ground.
Yes, but then it goes up, okay? So if, I, if the foot, what I said was the footprint is 14% greater, and that's what the.
Gross floor area, right.
Yes, right, okay, now, but to, to your point, Mr. Chen, again, I, there's, we, we seem to be at cross purposes here. No, we're not saying that, we're, we're, we're using the, the standards that the applicant gave us and that your bylaw gives us for the route that the applicant is taking, which is the special permit route, okay? And that standard, by their admission, it's in their application, and it's in the bylaw, unless you agree with some of my points earlier, maybe, but even if you don't, the standard that you have is not substantially, or substantially, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, okay? So we're using that definition, and that's what we're presenting, that this proposal with the special permits is more, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It doesn't mean that another project, which would go through the proper, the proper means of approval, which would be a variance, would be the same, would have the same argument that it is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. It could be, you, you could build a, I could think of several ways that a building could be built on this project, on this property, that would be, or would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. or would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This is not that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Now.
I'll let you wrap up, yes.
Okay. Just to address some of the things that I think were stated earlier that need to be rebutted. Again, I talked about structure. No, it's not anything that's built. And it's not anything that's covered by a building code. Building code is, as we all know, that thick, and it covers many, many different things. And structure in zoning is what the bill, what the bylaw defines it as. It dismantle is not anywhere found in the building. In the zoning code, I've never seen it in any zoning code or zoning bylaw that I've looked at. I don't, I'm not an expert on building codes. Maybe you guys know more about building codes than I do. But, from what I've seen, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a word in the building code either. Modification of existing ZVA decision. That ZVA decision is gone. It died two years after it was issued and was not kept in. And land court cases, as I said, are good law. I've jeopardized them. They are good law. They've not been criticized or distinguished. And we already talked about the LID requirements being applicable. Asbestos, no, there is no asbestos. And we talked about the access. So, with that, I know we'll be hours late, and I'll turn it over to.
Question.
No. But, please. Structure, as defined by the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts definitions, Mass. general law. Structure, a combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building framework retaining a tent, revealing stand platform, bin, fence, sign, flat pole, recreational tramway, mast for radio antennas, or the light.
Yeah, you're mast for the building.
No, as defined by the Mass. general laws, section one definitions.
Definitions in MGR.
Okay, yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's not, that's not in forty A. And it's not in any zoning law. You're, and there's a structure, that, that's a structure that applies. And I said, you're perhaps more familiar than I am with the building, but that is not the definition that you'll find in any zoning bylaw or any zoning code. I'm very confident of that.
I'll tell you to the town of where I am because I'm the one down there right now.
So, go down with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I only need three minutes.
Try to do it in two, but you got it.
Yep, we're done.
Are you sure?
I, I think you need to hear from the.
No, I want, I want us to say something rebutting you, and then we're going to hear from the.
Yeah, just while, while what you said is fresh in your mind, and I'll only address the points. Just very, very briefly, the standard is not substantially more detrimental. The standard could be that something could be detrimental, right? It can't be substantially, the word matter. With respect to the assessor cards, they describe a building on the property. With respect to the drainage pattern, the statement was made, you have to find that drainage wouldn't be affected. That's not what the standard says. What the standard says is that the improvements shall not affect the natural drainage patterns of the water course. Very, very different. The town has a stormwater bylaw which has to, which the applicant has to get an permit for from a different board who's going to hire a peer review engineer to look at those particular issues. But in any event, it's all sand out there. The footprint would not be increased, as I may appoint to you, because it's the circumference of the piers. The, the section forty, four fifty, for what it's worth, was adopted at a town meeting as part of all of the other regulations that were adopted concerning the village district and the dense, and the projects, the large projects that have to go in, in that district. When you look at the illustrations, you see parking lots and things of that nature. As far as the height of the building, it will have to comply with the building code, just like every other building there. Speaking of every other building there, there's an aerial that.
You mean the zone.
Uh, the, the zoning code, thank you. Speaking of every other, uh, building, there's the second page of my packet. There's an aerial. You could see what the neighborhood looks like. Substantially more detrimental. And then as far as access is concerned, that has existed over a hundred years. And e- even though maybe the argument could be maybe.
Excuse me, no, 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 really.
No?
I mean, we, we sat here and we, we allowed the developer's attorney.
As.
Over and out.
I happen to be.
And, and, and now he's rebutting things. Now, I'm going to have to rebut what he, what he just said.
You have one minute.
Okay, I will. Assessors' cards, I talked to Mr. DeVito. He said, ignore all that stuff. That's just the way, that's just what the computer prints out. He said, what you look at, what you look at is this in the right-hand corner, depreciation. It's for the building. Hundred percent, okay? You go through the, the various cards, hundred percent, hundred percent, hundred percent. There's one that's ninety-nine percent. He said to me, I asked him about it. He said, that was a mistake. It should have been a hundred percent. Okay? So, the bill, the, the assessor's cards do say that there's no building on the property. So.
Are you gentlemen?
I'm done.
I'm done.
Okay. So, we have this one, if, if we're not done by ten o'clock, we'll have to continue this. That, like, you know, you have to request continuance because you want to hear from the community. Please, community members that are not represented by council, okay? We want to hear from you because I think council, both counties, I don't need to hear from the owner of the property. I don't think we need to hear from people that are represented by council here. Anybody who is not represented by council opposing this, who would like to come and speak, please come up to the microphone, name and address for the record, and then we will, once we're done in the room, we'll turn it over to, to, to online. Please, please come up so we can hear you. Gentlemen, I think you can, just so we can get somebody up here. Because otherwise, otherwise it doesn't get off on the report.
That's fine.
I did, you know, I did.
I'm only going to be a minute, and I'm not a lawyer. My name is Steve Shepherd. I live at Seventy Cituett Avenue in the neighborhood. With their forty-four years, I've seen a lot. And I'm saying that this property is similar to the one that you looked at in January on one forty-one Turner Road. That it can't be built under our zoning regulations. And that was a decision you made there. It's the same thing. Just as with one forty-one Turner, the structure, we don't need to get into that again, has been non-existent for years. What is on this lot is a pile of rubble. It is in no way a building. As you said, in fact, the assessor's card next to the building has a valuation of zero. There's no building there. The fact that the applicant paid significantly less than the assessed value of the land on our public record tells us that it was viewed as unbuildable. That is, unless he gets the word, the way your magic wand and wave away the zoning regulations to allow construction of what will surely be a three-story towering million-dollar-plus structure in a location with no access, in a doom, on a salt marsh. Do we really want to create a system where vultured developers can swoop into a neighborhood to snatch up unbuildable lots for a bargain, then get special rights from rules to build where it's not allowed? I think that would be a dangerous precedent for the entire town and is certainly detrimental to this neighborhood. And I hope you deny it. Thank you.
Sir, I, and I'm going to ask this question of everybody that comes up here that is, lives in the area, whatever. Are you okay with that property staying exactly as it is? Exact, I'm.
Exactly. I think that the owner of it should have long ago been required by the town's constituent to remove the rubble and create a safe situation. And I think that the lot should be just as you decided one forty-one Turner should be, an empty lot. And I think that that's what the, the, the long history that we heard, pieced together through people's memories and, and slaps of records, is, is pretty much irrelevant. The fact is, there's no building there. And.
When you say, but the, you said rubble. I picture rubble, a pile of rocks.
Go look at it. I mean, you have, you been down there to see it?
I have. What I'm saying today is, is there still the first floor deck there? Or is that since been down? Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
And it's been like that for years, for years. And, and all due respect, the town allowed it to stay like that. And, and it was, it was abandoned. It, it was abandoned. And, and the owner, the present owner knew that when he bought it. And I don't think that it's up to the town to increase the value of the lot and let a, let a big million-dollar house be built there. It should be just as you decided one forty-one Turner, which has been vacant for years, that it shouldn't be built on either. And, and that's the precedent I, I would ask you to, to follow up.
Anyone else from in here that is not, although, has not otherwise been represented by council?
My name is Sean. I live at one fifty-eight Turner Road. To me, in my mind, an abandoned property, a land, is no use to anybody. It doesn't look good. It doesn't help the town. Building something there that's going to bring in a family is going to be much more better for the town than just along those lines. I think an empty property is not a good-looking property. It doesn't bring taxes. It don't bring people. I myself lived in Dorchester for, for a long time, grew up there. Came to Cituett. I was welcomed. And rather, to Blizzard after seventy-eight, I was welcomed with people. Yeah, property was cheaper. Everything was, everything was ruined. Now, what if they ever said that these things never should have been rebuilt? So, that's what happened. So, I'm, 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 I think if somebody comes in and builds something and that people are going to live in, it's going to benefit the community.
Thank you, sir.
Question, please. You said you're at one fifty-eight Turner?
Yes.
Do you use metal land as your access?
Do I do?
You use metal land.
When you, when you go to your house?
Yeah, I think, I think so. Right away.
Thank you.
Is that good or bad? I don't, I don't like that. I'd like to pay that.
It's, it's, it's fine that you do.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody's upset that you do. Thank you. So, very.
Oh, yeah.
Sean, excuse me. Can you give us your last name, please, so we can have a.
You're not, yeah.
No, absolutely not.
Well, I hope.
I, I know, for, I'm helping Elizabeth.
Thank you, Bob. John Spenges. Thank you.
Next up, please.
Can I make one?
I, I just want the folks to speak in the meeting. I just want to get through that.
Are we going online? Because I have two hands up.
Well, there's no more person in the room. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else in the room? If there is that wants to speak, please raise your hand. We have two other people, three other people in the room. Okay. So, folks online, we have three other, we have four people in the room. As soon as we're done with them, we're going to get to you. Hopefully, we'll get to you before ten o'clock. If not, we won't have to continue this. Yes, man.
My name is Bella Shepherd. I live at Seventy Cituett Avenue. And I'm speaking half of the butter to one sixty-four Turner Road, which is the salt marsh between Otis Turner and Jericho Road. The marsh is dying. Redevelopment of one sixty-four Turner Road would be another nail in the problem. A grave detriment to the neighborhood. We depend on it for flood control. So, I'm asking you, please don't allow it. I'm part of this Cituett Salt Marsh stewardship initiative. We had hoped that since that lot has been unused for many years, a way could be found to remove the longstanding pile of rubble there and return the lot to its natural state, doomed alongside salt marsh. We expressed this hope to the Conservation Commission in a presentation last April. But the chairman of the Conservation Commission had other plans. Last summer, he bought the lot. He wants to build a towering structure there, as you can see in that application before you. The proposed building, to me, it would, it would loom a lot larger than whatever has ever been there. There are decks front and back. It will intrude on the neighbors, and it will cast light and shadow on the marsh, disrupting the tidal habitat. There will be noise and pollution to track. Access is a problem. The plan before you does not show how construction vehicles or the eventual, eventual residents will be able to get to that property. Where, where is the road to the house? You say Meadow Road has been historically used. I've seen minutes of planning board meetings that where the attorney for the then-owner of the property said, people use Meadow Road, but no one has the legal right to. And they wanted, the, the attorney wanted the town to grant him, grant access to those properties across the town beach parking lot and through the doom to, anyways. I, I don't think Meadow Road has been historically used or that anyone has had the right to use it. And I, it's in the marsh. So, let me just get back to, so where is the road? Where is the road to the house? Where is the driveway? Where are people going to park? The only ways into this property are through doomed salt marsh or the buffer to the salt marsh on land the applicant has not shown he owns or has a legal right to use. How is he going to create the access to it? Is he going to have to fill marshland or level the dunes?
All right, let me stop you there. Two reasons. One, my understanding was that your association was represented by council.
Right.
Second, second, and I ask
Right.
not people not to double up because we're running out of time, which means we're going to continue this. Secondly, there was a house there as recently as twenty fifteen. Everybody seems to forget that. And people for decades prior to that had the right to get to that house as do the neighbors. So, arguments about getting to the property, coming back from the property, and what using those roads would have as far as detriment to the salt marsh, right, apply equally to everyone that lives there.
Right.
Right? So, so if your position is no car should be going down that road, then no car should be going down that road. That's a different conversation we had with a different board and arguably a smaller board, right? So, so if that's what it is, you know, that, that's a different thing, right? It's not the perjury of this, of this committee, right, to decide that. If you have anything else, please, in the interest of time for the other folks here and folks on board.
Well, I just think that the proposal is inappropriate and unsuitable use of land under our zone.
Right. And I will add, I said, I'm going to ask this of everybody. Are you okay with leaving that property exactly as it is? Because your council is the one that said there's nothing there.
I think that there's an alternative to building on this property. The alternative is to raise and restore the weapons, not raise and rebuild. And we have as much of an interest in restoring the weapons and, as a community, as we have in rebuilding. This marsh takes floodwaters. It keeps them from the homes of, of the whole neighborhood. And so, there's a value in protecting them, in, in restoring that property to the weapons.
So, your ideal situation would be for someone to buy that property and then effectively donate it to the town?
Right. Somehow, if the, the ideal would be to get it into public ownership, protect it for the sake of our, of public safety.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, folks. Please, quickly, we're, we're running out of time and we're not going to go past ten tonight.
I'll be very fast. My name is Cindy Shepherd. I live at one, I live at number forty-three Jericho Road. My back deck looks right over the property and has for about forty years that I've lived there. I'm very concerned about the property. It was a terrible one. I saw it. For correction, what was it made tonight was that there was one wall until it was finally fenced and made more safe. There was one wall with no fence around it for four years. It was an imminent danger to pets and humans, and nothing was done about it. Frank came and put the fence around it, took the remaining wall down. And I look forward to what Frank will build. I've known him for over thirty years. And I know that he does beautiful work, and I think that anything he builds will be an addition to the community. And I hope that it works.
And you're a director, Bob.
I'm not.
You're a director.
No.
Now.
No, I am, I'm.
Sagittary brother, okay, thank you.
143 Jericho.
143 Jericho, thank you. Next. There's one more person in here? Please.
Hi, I'm Jill Suddit. And, um, retired science teacher from the town. Um, I have a lot of concerns for building on the marsh.
Address?
Uh, even on the other side.
Address the shop?
Oh, sorry, 9 Damon Road.
Thank you.
Um, so even on the other side of the marsh, there are several signs that are up to not enter the marsh at all. Um, I have a concern about the conflict of interest. Um, that the builder is also the head of the Conservation Commission.
Sure.
I find that atrocious. Um, I'm, as a retired teacher, every year, the teachers had to fill out forms so that there was no conflict of interest in our profession. Um, there are a lot of people in the town who find it atrocious, all the buildings that are being put up in this town. People are very upset about it. Um, and so I, my stance is that we don't build on this property. And that the, the structure should be taken down because, you know, just because there's a structure that is there that is, doesn't, uh, is not appealing, doesn't mean that we build on it. And I think that's.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? And I want.
Oh, and can I finish one more thing? Just one more thing.
Right now, please, we're.
One more thing is, I, you know, because of this conflict of interest, I'm just wondering, are you, would you be able to protect that, the marsh?
Well, the Conservation Commission can, arguably, the applicant, arguably, the applicant, if, if the applicant is on the Conservation Commission, then they would recuse themselves from any decision. Right? That's how that generally would work. We're gonna end up continuing this, cause it's five minutes and 10, so we'll let the person here speak, please. We got five more minutes. I'm out.
I'm Jamie Patterson. I live at 174 Turner Road. I live right in the neighborhood. You can actually almost see my property on that map. Um, I just wanna say that right away that you were considering there is actually was just for utilities. So, there were poles set for electrical to houses, including my own. Um, also, I want to address that I do also believe that Frank Snow is a conflict of interest. Um, as today, I was getting home from work and I witnessed him driving over cattails. And I have video and photo on that property.
Thank you.
For now.
Anybody else in the room? You have to let Frank respond to the, uh, questions. Well, I, I will, I will let Frank respond. I just wanna get done with the people in the room and I will let Frank respond. Before we adjourn. And you need to speak, right? So, please.
Mary Lynn, 4th Menorah. I have multiple properties, 166 Turner Road.
Okay.
Um, I have that property. Um, I want to kind of reflect your statement. You're actually right. Mr. Snow, as we all know, that can, let's give him that can, is very aware of the guidelines for conservation. But why then in July did he take down the remaining erected structure with multiple commercial vehicles? He erected a fence. He is less than 100 feet from fright mindies of salt marshes and there was no protection. Where were the, the fields ahead? Where were, where were the guidelines for him? Because God knows if I did that, you guys are gonna be at my front door. So, this is my problem, is the whole procedure. There are people talking here to you. And we're gonna go back. It's the owners, the property owners of 143 Jericho Road. They're members of his trust. And I have, I have proof, I have proof. Like, I have doubt with Mr., I've lived in my property for over 63 years, almost 64. I have eight generations. I have been through storm after storm. We didn't get out in 78. What has been there has been abandoned. I have had more conversations and documentation with Mr. Valdez. Half of this is police reports. He was not an easy man to get along. And what he did is he brought in addicts from other state that stayed in my brother, who is now passed, but 10 Meadow Road. And they shot heroin out in the driveway. And that's what my children and grandchildren hadn't put up with. And yes, it's an eyesore. But we were under, my daughter is disabled. She got hit by a car. She's the youngest of my three. She lives with me because of that. She literally, 10 Meadow Road was my late brother's house. For the past six years, we have been in conversation with the town, with Mr. Valdez, with the estate, if we wanna get into, Larry Mayo, Orenberger, Two-Fangion, Dennehy, John Dennehy, he's all familiar names to all of you. The way he went about this, he approached a gentleman who's sitting in this room and he can vouch for it. He asked him all about it. He gave him the complete dynamics of neighborhood and the property. And a lot of it was, your best bet is to, do you do diligence or turn it in, in eye? Not only did he not do any of that, he thought because he holds a chair in this town and has for a number of years, that he could just come through the back doors into whatever he wants. And that's not gonna fly. Because you're, why? Again, he comes in with his, he owns a construction company. He comes in with their trucks. He takes down the building. He doesn't have permits. Where's his permits? Who gave him a permit? Nobody gave him a permit. Did you give him a permit?
I ordered, I ordered him to take the building down to a point where it was made safe and defensive.
Did you give him a permit? Well, I went to the town administrator.
He did not need a permit.
I went to.
He doesn't need a permit for that work.
Okay.
Direct instruction to do it, make it safe.
So, with this also, my daughter within Lake. I'm active. Jack Conway, Sue DePisa, Raelita, all of them. Do you know she had an offer for that house for $300,000 and he bought it for 193? People need to take off their blinders and see. Why is he allowed to do what he wants to do in a small knit community? That I'm sorry, my family has been there for eight generations. You know, where's the policies and procedures and where's all the, you know, applications and stamps of approval for him? Because my disabled daughter has nowhere to live now. No one leaves $100,000 on the table. How did they get that house? And now, they're cutting holes in a fence that adjuces the house with 143. And guess what they're knocking down? Frank Mindys. Where's the town? Where's the board? Where's all these committees? And that's the truth. That's what's going on down there.
Thank you. Um, anybody still online? Uh, let, um. Is there anybody still online that wants to speak?
Uh, yes, this is Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road.
Yes, sir.
I've lived in this area since 1999. So, the first thing I'd like to comment on, the portion of Meadow Road that is illustrated on the diagram was not been used as the access and driveway for this property since I've lived here. They've always used the right of way. I don't know if they have access to the right of way, but Meadow Road has not been used in this area. It has been used where the previous gentleman talked about. And that, that is the end. But when it gets to the corner there, if you go down towards the marsh, that hasn't been done. Um, like to make some statements about the timeline, because it sounds a little bit off. First, before any work was done on this building, this, this house was not occupied for a period of time. Sometime, and I don't know the dates, 14 or 15 maybe, probably 2015. The structure that was on the base, the roof was cut off. It was completely, all the walls were taken out of the interior, completely gutted out. A second set, a second floor wall was built on, on the existing walls. They started to put in a roof structure. I'm gonna assume that the building inspector got in there, because there was no sign of any type of building permit, no red card on the front of the building or anywhere on the property, no, um, conservation, um, placard that's required. They tore all that down. They left the front wall up.
Yeah.
Which is what I assume you have the pictures of. Over time, it fell forward, was dangling. This property had, had no work done on it from probably 2017 to, to whenever Frank went in there and secured the property.
Which is consistent, which is consistent with what we've heard, so, so thank you for confirming that.
So, it's been abandoned since the 2016, 17 period time, probably before then. There hasn't been a structure there, or, you know, a structure, because, uh, since they tore down what they put up probably without, without a permit. So, that's a problem. As far as any hazardous materials on there, Frank, you bought a brownfield. It's the, it's a brownfield now. It's responsibility of the owner to clean up the brownfield. So, no, if it become, if it is not built on and not re-permitted, then it can't be left like it is. Now, the, the platform there, this area floods to the point that that platform is not high enough. That's how deep the water gets in there. If there's a car in there, let's say someone buys this property, goes away in the winter and we get a storm, we have a car underwater. Not what we want in a salt marsh. So, you know, there, there's just a lot of things to say that this should not be rebuilt. And it probably, from what I've listened to tonight, does fit the, the, um, the, uh, definitions of abandoned, not used. And, uh, the permits don't apply. They obviously did not apply, uh, react to whatever, uh, orders that you had done in, I think it's 17. And I know that all it takes to extend orders is to walk down, go to the, um, building inspector, go to the planning board and go, "I want an extension. I need another year." So, it's not like rocket science to get an extension.
It's hard though, it's hard when you die though.
Well, yeah, but that was after the four-year period. And it's the responsibility of the estate to do it then. There is an estate. I, I said that it went through probate in less than two years. So, there was an estate and somebody had, uh, had the responsibility for the property. And he had a lawyer, because the lawyer did it and the lawyer should have been able to tell him to do it. Uh, the property, the, let's see, so access to the property 166 Turner, that comes off of Jericho. The property, what is it, 164A? That hasn't been lived in for the same timeframe as this property. Um, that's an abandoned property too. And, um, they are, they use the same right, same, the right of way to get in there. So, there is no legal way, there is no way to get on this property, because Meadow Road doesn't exist and it's probably overgrown and is a wetland now. So, therefore, it would have to be brought up to the minimum standards of a right of way. And until you can show that there is access to this property, you can't build a property without access. I don't, I'm not positive how Frank intends to get the pile drivers in there and all his equipment when he has no access except for going over a road that is now a wetland. Or you are getting the right of way, actually, I think if you look on the town map, it's shown as an alleyway. Uh, they have to ask the town to do that. Um, so, I just wanted to give you a little bit more of the information so that, uh, you can make a valid decision, because this is, this should go back to original wetlands. Having a house, having a property there, having a sewer line that has potential leak to dump stuff into a wetland, that's not a very good situation. Sewer line is is down there and who knows what condition it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I, I will give the applicant, if you wanna take, um, one minute.
There are two more hands up. Do you wanna do them or?
Well, I, no, so what we're gonna do is, I, I.
Just finish it up. We can close the hearing. Then you guys can take whatever time you need to deliberate in the next meeting.
Okay. Um, two more folks. Please make it as brief as possible. I'd like, we'd like to hear new issues rather than the same issues. And if you wanna attach the same issue to it very, very quickly, please.
There we go. There are Marianne Lewis?
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thank you to the members of the, uh, Salt Marsh, uh, stewardship. Uh, I just wanna say briefly, I am an attorney. I think Mr. Glick is on solid legal ground for all the arguments he articulated earlier. Having said that, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, uh, um, I would prefer that the property not stay as it is, so I would encourage us as a community, a board and members of the audience and members of the neighborhood, I'm at 18 Lighthouse Road and have been for over 25 years, uh, to find a way to work with Mr. Snow. And I don't think that the proposal that you have before you is adequate enough information to render a decision on that. And there was a lot of discussion regarding footprints and setbacks, et cetera. But the fact of the matter is decks are not, uh, subject to setbacks, is, looks to be a lot of deck area, which really require a lot of pilings being driven into a very environmentally sensitive area. A lot has happened since 2016, just to remind everybody, if the memories have faded. In 2018 of March, we had three success of Noristas that virtually almost cut off the entire area. We have, uh, seawalls that are crumbling. We have rising sea levels. And this type of construction needs to be thought about in a very different way. This governor's administration has recently proposed and promulgated, uh, retreat uh, in these coastal sensitive areas. You have property values. There was one in Nantucket that was listed for 2.2 million. It went for 600,000. A lot is changing right before our eyes. And so, I think as a community, as a town, as a tax base, we need to start thinking about this stuff quicker than, and, and not relying on 100-year history or even 10-year history. Figure out a way to work with Mr. Snow to improve and prefer what is there now, to, again, to answer your question, Mr. Chair. I don't think anyone could stand up and say, "Oh, yeah, I'd love it for it to stay exactly the way it is." I applaud Mr. Snow for taking the chance on it. He did get it out of, you know, a, a below assessed value, which I'm happy for. So, he still has some wiggle room not to be financially harmed by it. But to contemplate things about footprints and circumference of pilings and to suggest that putting in a whole bunch of. That putting in a whole bunch of pilings to support decks which aren't subject to setback would not impact. Or affect patterns of water flow is just not a credible statement. So, um, I feel rushed and I'm gonna cut myself off, but I would implore the board to consider these other things. Let's maybe take a break, take a breather, maybe come back with more information about the proposal and the plan. And try to work together as a community to work with Mister Snow, to put something there that is reasonable. And I think Mister Glick said, when you pressed him on it, Mister Chairman, about what, you don't want anything near, you don't want this. He answered the question, I think a lot of the folks just don't want what this proposal has in it or doesn't, the unknown of what it doesn't have in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh.
Right, one more?
Okay, one more, last one.
Hello, Suzanne Malarky, Suzanne Malarky of one oh seven Turner Road in the neighborhood for over forty years, in town for over sixty. Um, I live in a flood zone, I live by the other side of the marsh. I'm very concerned about the things that go into the marsh and that harm it. Additionally, the town is taking money and, um. Things to try and protect the different beaches, to add marsh grass, to do all this kind of rejuvenation at a very high cost. And here, we're talking about doing the opposite. Additionally, the whole abandonment thing, that house has been in disrepair for years and years, I agree, I think the town should have done something about it. Um, sooner, and, um, the roadway there with the trucks coming in and out, I have a house across the street from me that's being. Built a new house up on, um, pilings, or not on pilings, on cement pillars across the street, it's taken over a year, I can't even tell you how many trucks, how many cars, how many things parked there. I agree with what, uh, Mary Ann Lewis had just said before me and, and certainly with most of the folks who spoke tonight. About having more information, better information, better set of plans. I really hope you don't just pass this through without a lot more detail and a lot more information, thank you.
Thank you. Are we done with it online?
Yes.
Done, people here have spoken. Affirmative. I think your attorney wanted you to. Address briefly some of the statements that were made about your character. Uh, but we'll give you that quick opportunity and then, just to be lazy, um, if you are. We can continue the deliberation. Okay, uh, to the next meeting where we do this. That sounded good, okay.
Sir, thank you, Frank Snow. Um, just to make it clear, so will this, when this gets continued, is there additional discussion or it'll just be your?
We'll, we'll deliberate, we're not gonna open it up to the community discussion, because the community has spoken.
Okay, so once this is done tonight, then.
Unless, un- unless, unless, and I'm not suggesting you do this or you don't do this. Unless you guys come back with some revisions. Or some additional information or anything else in the interim. We will deliberate and rule on what we have in front of us, right, as proposed, right? Um, you are free to do that, um, and ask for a further or, and or ask for a further continuance, that is not something that you have to do today. Okay, and I'm not suggesting you do it or you don't do it by any means, okay?
No, I understand, I'm just trying to understand the.
Yes, you asked a very specific question, I'm giving you a sort of a very specific answer. The plan right now is absent any other. Any other changes in our application by, by you all, right, that we are going to deliberate on. Right, in the public forum and rule on the application and the request as it has been submitted. Okay, yep.
Thank you. So just to, you know, a few quick notes, first off, this isn't quick or cheap. And we didn't choose any, uh, subversive path to do this, this is all been out in the open, all of. Um, advertising hearings, all that sort of thing has been done. The securing of the property was done by permission from both the building department and, uh, the, the Conservation Commission has a process of a minor activities program. Which were applied for, by, through the agent to secure the property and make it safe. So there was no malice or, or, or whatever in that regard. And as far as ethics is concerned, I believe I have followed all the, um, requirements of the Ethics Commission, I'm pretty aware of that process. And, uh, a little bit discouraging, um, I think I have shown that I have integrity in this town, and I'm not trying to do anything that's illegal or. Or whatever, this is a process. And, and I think I'm following the process as I should. Um, couple of quick things, just because we talked about different things, the, the fact is that there is a foundation and a first floor deck, a set of stairs on that property. It's not a pile of rubble, I mean, it's, it's deteriorated, but it's certainly not, not some form of a structure on that property, I think. Maybe the assessor had it a little bit wrong, but the water connection and the sewer connection alone on that property are probably worth fifty or sixty thousand dollars. If you go and purchase one, right? So, whether the assessor didn't get it right, this neither here nor there, but there was value beyond just the land on that piece of property. Um. As far as the roads concerned, uh, we did quite a bit of diligence looking at this with, with my attorney when we purchased it. To see where the right of ways were, where the roads were, and, and feel that those could be used, and in fact, some. Careful, uh, repair, whatever, to the roadway in time could actually make it much better than the situation that exists now, as well as any work that's done on the site. So that, those were the things that we considered, um, in looking at that. And, uh, I, I think that's about the extent of that, and it's too bad that Mister Valdez was more of a destructor than a constructor, but. We don't know the answers to all those scenarios that are, I'm just trying to move forward, um, from the point that we have now. Thank you, thank you.
Did you wanna say?
Only as a reminder that the very first line of second eight ten. Is any lawful structure or any lawful use of land or structure existing in whole or in substantial part? Under the effectiveness by law. But on. Uh, we've had this discussion before in other cases. Uh, about what, what, uh, determines substantial in whole or in substantial part? Uh, this is in substantial part, uh, more substantial than, you know, others that we've seen.
Okay, uh, with that, um, I'm gonna have you request a continuance for the purposes of deliberation.
Should we vote to close the public hearing?
Well, well, we can't, so.
That's what I would ask the other folks.
So, I'll vote to close, vote, close the public commentary period.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll request a continuance till whatever time the board would like to see us next.
Yes, and I, well, it's either be the next, eith- either the, what is it, March, April?
April.
April's next.
April, April, I may need depending on.
And then I'll grant a period of time in addition to that, could file your.
Thank you. Uh, much appreciated, uh, with that, um. Elizabeth, do we have any minutes, we have minutes to approve, right?
We, we can do that through email.
I, I think you have to vote right now to continue it to a specific date, yes.
All right, so let's vote to continue it.
To April eighteen or the last day?
Let's, let's do the May day.
May?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, okay.
What's the date was supposed to be?
To the May meeting, well, we don't have to.
I wanna say it's the first, not.
Well, the date to be set, but to the May meeting, right? So I move that we continue this to the May regularly scheduled May, Sunday border field meeting.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so continue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, there is no other business that we don't, that we need to do.
We not, not.
With that, uh, I move that we close it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, May sixteen, right?
May sixteen.